Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the board of selectmen's meeting for August 16th, 2017 at 7:30 PM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America. The public will sustain my nation under God, visible, limiting, just as for all.
Okay. Opening comments, Mr. Lombard.
Well, we lost a real townie over this past week, Mr. Paul English. He was a, he dedicated his life to the town in Nahon. He was not only the Waffandra, he was a call fireman, policeman, and he was a great guy. He knew everyone in the town, and people legitimately really liked him. He never had a bad word for anyone in his 50 years since I've known him. And he was the type of individual that he always, always spoke highly of everyone. He helped out in many campaigns, and the only individual I know that topped the ticket in every, every vote, vote race, every time we had a race. He was a great guy, a good guy, an honest guy, and he's the true meaning of the townie, the word townie for the town in Nahon. He was a townie, and he's gonna be sorely missed. I want to wish Mary Jane and Paul our condolences on behalf of the board. A great family, the whole English family is a fantastic family. That's all I have for that.
Okay, thank you. T?
I concur with you, Richie. He's gonna be sorely missed. I'd also like to, on the brighter side, talk about a meeting last week that 25 people attended, the Green Communities Meeting up here, Enzo, myself, and who was the man from Swanski?
Neil Duffy.
Neil Duffy, May 28th. That's a lot of people that came out for a hot night. It was very well received, and a lot of people signed up, and I won't say much more because that's what Enzo wants to talk about, I'm sure, at some point.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, it was, it was a great meeting, and my sentiments also with Paul. I worked for his dad and his brother a few years, and his father was actually a board of selectmen member a long time ago, so, and Paul was a townie. He was always at the fire department, he was always doing something. He was always wheeling and dealing, so, he's quite a guy, and we're all gonna miss him. But getting back to the Green Communities Meeting, it was a very good meeting. I have, it's gonna be quite a big, I mean, we have a lot of people that wanted to sign up, and they did, and I think it's important that we appoint them, really appoint them all, because it's a lot of work, and I think it's a good thing, so, I don't suspect there'll be any problems with it. I think that'll be a good thing for the town, and we can make some appointments tonight, if that's okay with you guys. Okay? All right.
Mayor, one more?
Sure.
In the course of the summer, we have, as board of selectmen, come down hard on the people swimming off the wharf, and it's been my job every meeting to say one word, and that one word is liability. And the police and the haba master have really cracked down, and we finally received an actual friendly piece of mail from, from Vi. Thank you. It's, to me, it's very important. An incident where a kid jumped off and almost hit a fishing boat a few weeks ago was not, that's not funny, and they thought it was hilarious, until we have liability. So, thank you for that input.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Okay, now, we're gonna go to the meeting schedule, end of summer schedule. Okay, the next meetings?
September 7th and 21st.
Okay, September 7th and 21st, is that fine? Okay, all right.
I'll be, I'll be out of state.
Okay.
But, but doesn't matter.
Right, we'll be here, okay. All right, now, we have a...
We'll be back to our normal schedule on Thursday night, correct?
Yeah. And when do you want to be?
Thursday night, first and third, right?
Correct.
First and third, Thursday night?
Okay.
And then we'll be back after summer schedule.
We won't golf, right?
Well, just back to Thursday, where people normally expect us to be on Thursday night.
Right.
Ratings are low.
Yeah, that's what I heard, yeah. Okay. My ratings are high. I don't know where you guys are.
You got the, approve the minutes?
Yeah, okay. And we'll entertain a motion that we approve the town, the meeting minutes of, let's see, 7:19, 17?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Any discussion? Any of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous vote, passes. Okay. Okay, ongoing business. Citizens forum, this is the time when people can get up and really let us have it. Anybody? Okay, okay. Peter, was your, is Peter O'Gall, just wanna go to the...
Come to the mic, please, sir, so that...
No, to the mic, in the middle.
The microphone right there?
There you go.
And just talk to us, thank you.
I'm not used to talking with a microphone. So, I just wanna preface what I have to say, that, one, I love the town, I love where I live, I bought the house and property I have because of the, a lot of it was the people and everything else, but I love the view, and I like the lifestyle I have, and I've worked very hard to have that. And I'm at the point where I'm ready to leave, and looking for homes outside of Nahon, and I'm a straight shooter, you guys, people know me, just tell like it is. I've been appealing to town officials, or various town officials, for years now, to allow me to have a peaceful existence, particularly from Friday at dusk to Sunday at dusk in the summertime, and I still can't sit outside and have a quiet meal on my porch. The, and because of the amount of activity that's parked, cars that shouldn't be parked there, motorcycles that are going by too fast, motorcycles that park in front of the house, it's mostly people from 14 years old, 30 years old out of town, that get now Ubered in, taxied in, dropped off, playing their boomboxes at night, or swearing, and I understand that it's a public area, and I understand that no one probably cares about me, 'cause I'm the only one living there. But, so my message is, I'm a businessman. I don't know if I'm the smartest guy around, but I'm not that stupid. This is a simple thing to fix, and quite frankly, I'm getting lip service, and since I can't do anything about it, other than appealing to you folks, I have no choice but to go. And I think it's sad, because I love this town, I love helping people, I think I've been very charitable, I help out everybody I can, I don't even know if people know that, who I help out. I do it 'cause I like it, I don't, it's anonymous, and I, and I figured on spreading the rest of my life here. But I don't know why, and it's not about paying a lot of taxes, it doesn't, I don't care about that. What it cares about is I wanna be in a community where the people care about everybody else to the point that even if you have more than most others, and you drive fancy cars like I do, I still should be able to sit outside my house at night in the summertime, and not have to hear people swearing all the time, making a lot of noise, and all that stuff. And so, if you guys can help me fix that proactively now, well, it's not proactive, really do something, and I have a lot of ideas how to do that, I'd be glad to talk. But you guys run the town the way you want, everybody has a right to live the way they want, and, but I'm here to at least answer questions, have ideas, and try to solve it, 'cause I'd like to study. That's it.
Okay, turn it down, good. All right. I can understand your frustration, you know, Peter has sent me numerous photos of cars in front of his gate, and he's not getting any satisfaction, and I don't blame him, so we need to do something about the parking up there, okay? And we're gonna talk about that towards the end of the meeting, it's on the agenda for the, under new business.
Why don't we talk about it now?
Okay, sure, we can, we can move it up. First and foremost, you would both agree with me that we always tow cars, am I right? Have we asked for that, Richie? Towing and tagging, if they're illegally parked?
Okay, yeah.
I mean, it's pretty simple. I would instruct the administrator to instruct the police chief, if these cars don't have stickers, if they don't, and, and I don't, like, you know, I don't wanna sound prejudiced toward anybody, but if they don't have a sticker, Nahon's only so big, it's one square mile, and we just don't have the resources to take care of this. You got a guy that's frustrated, he has done a lot for the town, he's, he's a good guy, he's, he's very frustrated, I can, I've seen the cars in front of his gate, he was actually, I recall last year, he had somebody in his yard, and he's got, you know, and the person didn't belong, am I correct?
That's why I got the case, the people who actually fired from my driver, and he was drunk driving.
Where was this place?
And this guy opened one game, and fired one.
So, we need to do something.
Hold on, hold on for a minute. Did you call the police?
Yeah.
Did they come up?
Um, so, the police, what do you start with?
No, 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 I don't wanna talk about the police again. I wanna talk specifically about that incident where someone parked in your yard, did you call the police for that incident? Did they respond?
They responded about half an hour after.
Half hour later?
Oh.
How many times does that happen?
I'm not ready to check.
Well, again, I, I wanna get a feeling, because I...
It's what I've heard about myself, I've heard, you don't know what you need to hire a police officer. We're busy doing other things, we're setting people up every time, when the mards are there, they've already complained such a peaceful, that's good, when the mards are there, I don't know what that label that is, I'm not making it, that's, that's, that's not, that's not fair.
Well, it's true. We never had a complaint. This is the fir-, no, 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 this is the first time, no, but, let me, Peter, it's first time, and I, I understand what you're going through.
The mards are still in the basement?
No, I didn't know that. I had no idea, I had no idea where they live, but we never had a complaint from them, okay? I'm telling you, okay? But I know what you're going through, because I live on Willow Road, and I'm right at the intersection of Willow, okay? Right at the intersection. It's like the Mass Pike there. It's like the Mass Pike there. I've got people going through that intersection, not stopping at stop signs, I've got bicycles at 5 o'clock in the morning flying through there, we've had two or three accidents already. It's like noise I've never heard, and I had my house completely foamed, so I don't hear really much, okay? But I can't sit, can't sit outside.
That's scary.
No, it's just the traffic. It's the traffic, it's the traffic from Ocean View, it's the traffic from Kelly Greens, it's, it's the, yeah, but it's, it's, the problem is, you know, you, we got a situation here, all the beaches in the, in the town are public, and they, and they found a way to come over here and use the beach.
Right.
If I were to pay for an accident, be up there from dust pride to dust on, you guys doing, I'll pay.
Well, have you, have we...
I'm trying to find my property, I can't.
Have you sat down with the police chief, to view about this problem?
Let me speak on this. First of all, I'm gonna speak on this. I was up there, I was a witness, when I first became a selectman, okay? And it took a half an hour for the cops to come up. I was there, and I can tell you, I was steaming when he called, okay? And, actually, it was Laurie that called, and you were outside with me, and we waited and waited and waited, and it took him a while, and there were all these kids, it's not traffic, it's the kids piling up at the, with motorcycles and bikes, at the, with the stepside, okay? God only knows what they're doing, you know, and it's social media, I mean, back in the, in those days, Richie, there was no social media, and now we have it, and it's becoming a problem, and they're gonna have to crack down on it. I mean, they, they don't want, I know I don't want it, I don't want, you know, these things happening. It's not traffic that's going around there, it's people parking there, they're over there with loud music, he's, he's telling us what he's, he's asking us.
The only thing we can do...
It's canoe beach, they're not tagging, they're not towing. I want them tagged, I mean, do we agree on that, tagging and towing?
Yes, we, we've already sent that message, we sent a memo to them already, okay?
We want it done, okay?
You have to realize, we closed down the wharf.
Yeah.
And that drove the kids, I'm talking...
I don't give a shit, all the days.
Over the 40 steps? Over, over the 40 steps?
They did, but they're not, they're not not having...
Well, if I may, they may, they've gone over to a scarier place, because they go off 40 steps on Castle Rock, and I grew up here.
I don't care about that.
Well, they dive off that back of Castle Rock, and it's, it's dangerous.
But my point is that, that's probably a traditional issue.
Yeah, but, but they come up to your bench, in your area, and go down the benches where the bikes are up, and they tie the bikes, and they're all there. See, we've driven them from the wharf over to you, and that, it's a more, the scarier place over at 40 steps, and you got a 40-foot fall there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like...
I know, but I hate to say it, 'cause I'm a traditional guy, and I really love the traditions, and I don't know, and I don't know a profile, I mean, sometimes I discuss this, 'cause you can't say so, but, but, I'll try to test that.
Well, we can, we can help you, we...
There's kids that come up there, I know most of them, but they're from 40 steps lane in the Wharf Street, and their parents have no good parents, and they actually are very respectful. I'm talking about kids that come in on bicycles, taxis, who are out of town, who have dropped off, their parents are leaving, or something like that, and they are most dead, and they, and I don't know what they do, because they're not swimming, some of them jump out, go around the rocks, they can do whatever they want, but then they congregate around late time, and it's like a gallop, screaming.
Well, we're gonna have to increase the surveillance, increase the frequency of police officers going up there?
I have a school, I got, I got a school, I got a school, I was looking for surveillance cameras in the tree, you know, have them installed, I see our team else that down, so they have to, so the guy who consults guy, that he can just look at that area, that is under light, and if there's something going on, a power pack, or whatever, and it's very fishy, right? He gets on, he calls the police, so they don't have to keep going there, but I was turned down.
Who turned you down?
The chief did, and the reason being is that if there's a surveillance camera there, then we are responsible for anything that happens there. So if we have the opportunity to see it, and it happens, then, and we're liable for some inappropriate non-response, that's our liability.
I don't understand, if some residents are willing to put up a camera, why don't we allow them to put up the camera?
This was just a conversation back and forth between the two of them.
Why didn't I come to the board of selectmen?
Because, from what I understand, this is the conversation that occurred between the two of them, so it never elevated to this point. This is the first time it's actually come up.
How can he, the chief of police, turn him down, without an authorization from the board of selectmen, is my question, I guess.
Because if it's being asked to him, he's saying he would prefer not to, if it comes to...
I think he should come to us.
Well, I think that Peter should submit that request.
Well, usually, we don't get the, we don't get it, here again, it should've come to us earlier, all three members of the board. I mean, here he is, up in front of us on a, on a live night, and, and...
He, he, he almost, he may have been on the line, 'cause he's, you know, we're friends and...
You turn up, you turn up his five cars, I know that, so, that's why he's down there.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
I'm not across from us, I think it's a more adult solution, you shut down the wharf for someone else, not kill them, and, and, and it's dark, that's, you gotta elevate it, certainly, it's a safe, it's a little bit, again, I get it.
He should be at the mic, you know? It's not good.
But if I've got a problem, I can't live, and I literally did my properties the entire 40 steps each, you know, at one point, I went all the way to the bush, you guys hold that block there, but I have a particular problem here, and I'm not saying you don't need to, you phone your house, and you got the problem.
No, 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 I, I, I hear what you're saying, Peter, but this is the first time the board has collectively heard their problem, all right? Why don't you give, why don't you do this? Why don't you give us a chance to sit down with the powers-to-be, police chief, all right? Town administrator, come up with a workable plan, and we'll bring you in and make a decision. Tonight, we're not gonna, you know, we're gonna, you know...
I understand, I understand, I understand, but I swear to you, I tried to contact everybody to lead for a few years, for 20 years.
No, I, I...
That's what she made, you probably, first of all, you probably got it right.
No, 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 that's not it, this is, this is, this is business. This is, the chief doesn't hate you, or anyone else, he shouldn't be, he shouldn't take anything personal, this is all business. You've got a problem, we've gotta solve it. That's what I'm, that's what the board of selectmen's here for. That's why, you know, instead of, we should, we should've known about this problem, and it should've come up to us, the board, you know?
T, T, uh, T, actually, I have one second.
When I first came on the board, the discussion on the wharf hit, as far as kids jumping off, Ubering in, stealing bikes, driving, taking the bikes home, et cetera, et cetera. And at that time, we, we discussed having an increased police presence just driving East Point, northeastern, East Point by your place, back to the wharf, doing loops.
Yep.
And I thought that that had been working. This is the first I've, as a board member, I've heard. Please give us a chance.
Oh, no, no, I...
I, I mean, it, it...
Yeah, I just want you to know that I can just bring this, I don't feel like I just have, I mean, I don't, I think this, I think...
But there should be no, there should, there shouldn't be kids across there with their boomboxes and stuff, 'cause those, 99% of the time would not be Nahon kids, so, the police...
Nahon kids are fine, they actually, when I, I started working with them, I worked with them, 'cause I knew their parents, and they're very respectful kids, and they're just, they're, they're, so, there's nothing, there's problems in the town, but it's not this problem that I have to say, I'll just tell you that this problem, I've funded these kids, and she's what we got to, I said, call the police, but the big time, I'm gonna take it. And first of all, when I'm talking about kids, we're talking 14, the youngest kid, and they go all the way from 30 years old, so, kind of in the after year, but they're kids that seem to know how to ride their bikes, eight miles, or seven miles, or six miles on the roadway, and their parents seem to be, they're, they could be last year kids, drop off all day.
Right.
And, and, you know, that's, and I, I think I'm really calm, I like that, except probably five hundred people, so, it's all like I'm some, I'm no angel here, I'm not a specific guy, I just wanna get, that's the reason why, because it's beautiful, and it's, and it's suffering, because the problems, where you said, new to me, or there's enough police presence, there's enough signage, there's the right kind of signage, there are all these things to be fixed, are those legal to be fixed?
Oh, I do too.
And I will, say, I will help fund it, if I wasn't there, I would, I just want the parts, and then, that's it. Okay?
Yep, yep.
Thanks, Peter.
Thanks for telling us.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we take this recommend, this testimony under advisement, and meet with the police chief and the town administrator as soon as possible.
Yeah, so, second.
And, and find out exactly what we can do to help relieve the situation up in that area.
Okay, and I would add to that, I think we need to come up with some guidelines on how we're gonna tow and tag from now on.
Well, wait a minute, let's get this motion done first.
Okay, all right.
Can you have it in the next time, or if you're gonna... Oh, I don't know.
Well, it should be in the next 10 days.
Oh, oh.
We're not gonna give you, you know, we're not gonna, this is not, you know, Trump, you know, we're gonna do it.
Okay.
I don't wanna say that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, so now, let's get, you know, we can, this is the citizens forum, so, are you okay, Peter, with this?
I am, I, I appreciate it, I'm, I'm, I respect what you've got to do, I do it, so I don't know, I've never been, but I, but I give you my, my, my steer.
Well, we don't want you to leave.
No.
We want you to stay, we want your money Thursday night golf, because you're not, you're not a very good golfer, you're, you're very, you're not a very good golfer, so, and the money you're chipping in is, is very welcome, so we want you to keep that up, and we want you to improve, okay? You, you've been improving, we've been videotaping you, okay, for the end banquet, you've been videotaping, I'm not sure that you knew that, but I mean, you, you have improved.
Okay, anybody else in the citizens forum? Hearing none, we can move on.
Before we get into, are we, do we have hearings here?
Yes.
Yes.
Why don't we get, why don't we, instead of having, instead of hearing these people, is it from, who is here? Do we have the National Grid, is National Grid here?
That's the next question.
Oh, is that next?
That's the town administrator's report.
Oh, okay, I was wondering where it was, get, I don't want these guys...
The town administrator's report, we'll go to him, and it's gonna be National Grid.
All right, great, well, we'll come back up to 2B, or do you wanna talk about 2B now? Special town meeting.
Oh, okay, special town meeting, yeah, all right.
So, looking at the special town meeting, we have been discussing the potential scheduling of a special town meeting, we had left it as kind of a fall element, and the primary reasons for it were for the Coast Guard housing and possible funding for emergency repairs of the sewer system. The discussion has kind of dropped, last meeting, we talked about the fact of not having the meeting, I've talked to Dennis Ball, DPDW director, and we feel that it would be, if the meeting is being held, that would be a good opportunity for us to get bonding authorization for the monies needed for the sewer project, and it's about 1.5 mil that we would need.
Okay. This is the 1.5 that we've already spent?
We, above what we've already spent, correct?
No, no, that's not the que, is it for something new, or something old?
Some, well, it's something new, something new.
Have we spent the 1.5 million already?
Yes, 1.3.
1.3, yes.
What are we doing forward?
Going forward, we have about 178,000 that we're going to be spending.
No, 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 let's think, we've got a problem with the sewer, and the piping.
Yep.
We just spent $2 million on this, two, three breaks, am I correct?
Correct.
We, we spent Willow Road...
Yep.
And two on the Linway.
Correct.
To prevent the Linway from happening again, have we taken the camera shots, and run the camera through the sewer main, and come up with a recommendation?
That's all part of the 1.5.
That's all, that's all part of the 1.5, yes.
So we need to get that in there, and we need a special timing just to get that done.
Correct.
And then, once we have the special time, we can put the money in the annual timing.
Yes.
Am I correct?
Yes.
That's how we wanna, we need to do that.
Yes.
Before you have another, another, another major problem.
Yeah.
Because next time, we've got, we can't afford sewage trucks, 15 sewage trucks pumping out all the raw sewage, out of the nine satellite pump station, and the one big pump station, and they're running for three or four days, we just can't afford that. And the only way to stop that is we shut the water off, until we fix it, which would really, I'd rather give them bottled water, it'd be cheaper, to bring a truck, couple truckloads of bottled water for each house, instead of letting them run the water, and us pumping the sewer stations up. You gotta think about that. You should have that on the plan, and on the docket, for how much this is gonna cost us, so we don't get caught this time. That pipe is old.
Well, speaking of that...
Because the next time, next time, you block the Linway, and where you had the last block, I remember when that pipe goes in, it goes across, it go across where you, the second break was, goes across the outbound lane of the Linway.
Linway and sewer just had a break in that very area as well.
Right.
Yeah.
We thought that it was ours, too.
Yeah, have, have we received any money from GCR, or anybody, yeah, have we sued them yet, have we...
Nope.
Start the lawsuit, what's the lawyer, what's the town council on that, has he been informed about this?
Catch basin?
I'm sorry?
The first loss, that was the catch basin on top of the pipe, right?
Well, the first loss, that was the catch basin on top of the pipe, right?
Yeah, yeah, it looks like the pipe was called a hundred, that's, that's, that's the first, that's what it seems to be.
Now, see, that, I heard just the opposite.
Yeah, it was assumed just the opposite until we started actually looking at the plans and the dates.
Yeah, but that, that road, listen, I understand that, but that road was built, the road was done over after that, and when they do that, they pick up all the catch basins, it's, it's, that, that's what they do, they pick up all the sewer and they pick up all the catch basins, so they could've, there could be some relief there.
So, we, we're not gonna get any money from this.
Well, so, a council is saying the research is still going on.
Okay.
So, this is what we know right now.
How long did it take you to research it?
These plans are spread all about, and then they're old plans, and it just takes some time to find.
Oh, okay, so now, we, we.
Discussion on the timeline, if I may?
Sure, T, this is all the Coast Guard stations, that's on here. Right. The, I am not going to approve any special town meeting until I get a good feel inside of me for the Coast Guard committee on what they're doing and what's happening.
Thank you, John, thank you for your time.
So, this, if we, if you're talking a special town meeting just for the sewer, I'd have to think about that, too. Well, the sewer, we're gonna, I mean, that, that's important, but we have the book, we have the, we have the, uh, the book, Richie, we have, this has been done, it was done a long time ago, it was done in two thousand and fifteen, and that was my point, we never saw that book from Danny Coughlin that shows all of the flaws, so now we know it, and it's pretty much, we, I'm on that committee, and we've met a couple times, it spells it out right there, what we need to do, and we just need to do it.
So.
And, you know, there's, there's certain things that we wanna do first, but we wanna see what we're doing.
Correct.
Okay, before anything happens, before we go to any kind of town meeting, I wanna see exactly what we're doing in that, from that book, because I know what I think should be done first.
So, this discussion is designed to see if there's a tolerance for like a January, February special town meeting, uh, and if that's the case, we'll start gearing in that direction. Doesn't mean that you'll, you'll actually call when, but, uh, we've discussed the fact that the fall town meeting isn't, um, in the making.
Well, that's fine, I mean, if it's, if it's got to do with the water and sewer, we're gonna have to, we should have that anyway.
Yep.
Because I, personally, I think we should, because I, I don't want another problem like that. I don't wanna blow another million and a half dollars on something that we, the Board of Selectmen weren't told about, and I can tell you right now, we would've absolutely have done something with the infrastructure.
Well, you got a chance to do it now.
Well.
You're gonna, you're gonna have this special town meeting in November. You wait till January, February. The articles for the April town meetings due the end of January. So, if you have it in November, and this gives us what? You got September, October, November, and how many articles is gonna be in the water and sewer?
There's one right here.
Well, maybe two. You gotta pay for the one point two million, and then what do you get? The appropriate, appropriate cost for the fix, all right? And the information on that, and put those two or three articles in, and run with it. Anything else, anything else, you might as well wait till the April town meeting, the Coast Guard housing and everything like that.
Okay, so you wanna entertain a motion that we.
I, I move that we have a, the end of, uh, can't have the, the end of, uh, Thanksgiving, but the week before maybe Thanksgiving.
Okay.
People be here.
So, any second? I'm not seconding it. Okay, well, I'll second it for discussion. Um, if it's, if it's the sewer, I think we need, I think it's important. Is the drainage part of this also?
Yes.
Okay. Again, and I'm gonna say this again, you promised the drainage, I don't want, I want the drainage off that, the drainage on Foxel Road, I want them to stop. I, I don't know what, you know, you, you promised these people to do it, we promised them, it's gotta get done.
Yep.
Get the DPW down there, get them started on it, and, and just fix the pipe to that dish, because they deserve it, they pay taxes, and I want, I'd like to see it done, as you would.
Absolutely.
I think Richie would, too, so, um, so that's my discussion. Any other discussion on this motion?
The primary, the primary reason for the special town meeting is for the water and sewer. Is for the sewer mainly?
The sewer, but, okay.
Okay, if he's got water, something.
No, it's, I just call it water and sewer, so it's sewer.
Water and sewer, what he needs, okay? For the one point two million, and what's gonna fix the problem going forward.
Yep.
So, we don't have any problem. T?
Uh, I a hundred percent disagree with both of you. The primary reason for the special town meeting, in my mind, was the sewer and Coast Guard housing.
Well.
The finance and advisory committee, or whatever they are, said, "This is very easy to do," back at special town meeting, they wrote out seventeen paragraphs on, uh, what should be done, and now we haven't heard a word. So, if, if they're not ready, I'm voting no.
Well, I, this is, I tell you, that's, I, I don't, I disagree with the T totally.
Well, that's fine, I just said what I.
Because the reason, the reason.
I, I just stated what I, you know, this is my belief.
Yeah, but the Coast Guard housing.
Could go on till we get a special town meeting.
No, no, it could go on for another, and it could go on for another, it could go on for another four years. That committee, you know.
Great.
They're all over the lot up there, and I'm hearing, you know, so.
Well, I'm not hearing anything, that's why I'm voting no.
Well, they're not gonna be ready for the annual town meeting. But I mean, we've got, we, we, we know, we've got a problem in front of us right now, and it's facing us, and it's big time. You have another million dollar break, it's gonna bankrupt the town. We just can't, we can't afford this. And this, that pipe is, uh, how old is that pipe? Twenty, uh?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight, you know?
Okay, so, the Coast Guard housing committee, let's, let's discuss that. They're, they're supposed to come back with a, they've only met once, and I am hearing that's gonna take them two to three years.
Well, that's fine, I haven't heard anything.
Well, I, I just.
There's nothing said right here till the whole town can hear it.
So.
That's why I'm voting no.
Okay, I, I understand. So, we need to talk to them about that. That wasn't the understanding of, of the, um, town meeting. The understanding of the town meeting was that they would come back sooner than later so that we could have a special town meeting and get this done, because I don't wanna wait two years and find out that the market could tank. Right now, the market's still good, and I mean, and I, I'm not saying that they have to get it done in November, but I don't wanna wait two or three years for something that has taken already fif, uh, ten, fifteen years, all right? And then breathing down our throat is gonna be the, it's gonna, you know, we have to pay the bond, am I right?
Yes.
At some point.
Yeah.
So, five years is ridiculous, three years ridiculous, two years is even ridiculous. I would say more like, let's get it going, let's work at it, okay? But as far as the sewer, um, my feeling is, I, I think we need to at least slate a town meeting, a special town meeting for that. If, if it's, if Mr. Lombard thinks it's that important, I would have, I do agree with that, I, I mean, infrastructure is more important than anything to me. Just is. We'll call the vote. Okay, uh, all those in favor?
I, I'm gonna amend the motion that we have the special meeting on Monday night, November twentieth. That's the week of Thanksgiving, and most likely, we'll have a lot of people around that week, or, or not, but November twentieth on a Monday night would be ideal.
When, when is our next meeting?
September seven.
Seven.
You guys could pass everything, 'cause I won't be here.
Great. Okay, well, I think we need to bring the Coast Guard committee in, we, we need to talk to them and see what, what their plan is. They've only met once, uh, I was at that meeting, and they'll meet again on the twenty-sixth, I think, of this month?
I believe so.
Okay.
Why don't you bring them in the first meeting with, with us, September, uh, seventh?
To see what their plan is.
See what they, see where they're at, they're at. Because if you go any further.
Ask them what their, what their plan is, I mean.
If you go any further, you might as well put whatever they come up with a solution in the April annual town meeting. I call the questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I, I call the question, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, all those opposed?
Opposed.
No. Uh, the motion carries. This is just for the sewer, and, um, for now, and let's get that, at least try to get that done.
Great.
Okay, uh, town administrator's report.
So, we have here tonight, uh, National Grid, who is seeking a, um, public hearing for the purpose of putting underground utilities in at one thirty-two Willow Road. We have Tim here to walk us through that process and try to describe what is happening. Thanks for coming, Tim.
No problem. Good evening. Uh, Tim Leifert, National Grid Electric, one seventy Medford Street, Walden. So, uh, we're petitioning for approximately three feet of one three-inch underground conduit from existing pole ninety-nine onto the property of one thirty-two Willow, and this is for new service to one thirty-two Willow. Ready for any questions?
The underground cable?
It is an underground electric cable, that's good. It's gonna be within the PVC.
My government's house.
PVC conduit.
Yeah. May I?
Yeah.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the petition submitted by National Grid and advertised in the lin item on eight two seventeen and eight nine seventeen for the installation of a series of underground electric conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under and across the public way located on Willow Road from pole ninety-nine to serve residential customer at one thirty-two Willow Road, Nahant.
I'll second for discussion.
Discussion.
You're gonna go, are you, you're coming across the street?
It's actually not across the street, um, the pole itself abuts the property line at one thirty-two, so we won't even be crossing the side.
Are you gonna go on his property, come right underneath it like that?
Yeah, it's honestly not.
Okay, I was, I was confused, okay.
Sure.
Now, I, I, because everyone else in that area is above ground, correct?
I believe a lot of the properties in that area are, yes.
Can you make all those, uh, houses on that?
I wish.
On that side, underground?
If, uh, if the majority of them were upgrading their services, it's very possible.
National Grid has not responded to us, we wanted to put the underground cables, um, in Little Nahant, underground?
Yep.
There's just two areas, from the bank to the playground, put those underground, take the poles down, and then from the pizza store to the police station, those are the other two. Everything else beyond that is all underground. This way, we can take the poles down on the ocean side and make it kinda look nice. Would you, would you get, take that back to your boss?
I can certainly bring it to the department, that would, that would want to discuss that.
Would you give us some numbers, just the numbers, how much it would cost?
Uh, I can look into that.
Would you take, I mean, I'd like to get an answer to that?
Uh, sure.
I put that on the town manager's, uh, wishlist two or three times, and I've got nowhere, and no one's given me any numbers.
Well, I can't verify that we'll be able to get your numbers, but I can certainly look into it.
Well, if you want me to vote yes for this, it's right on the board to here, you know, that vote might go either way.
Well, uh, I'll, I'll look into it for you, for sure.
Mr. Lombard, you tell the boss, we know him, he's been here.
Yep.
Okay? National Grid, okay?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Great, thank, thank you, Tim, appreciate it. Uh, next item is Verizon, uh, we are in negotiations for the new license agreement for Verizon. Now, we have two license agreements, one with Comcast and one with Verizon. Uh, these are federally required, and what they provide us is the costs associated with the CATV up there in the balcony and our Abel Pedro. So, what you see here is the negotiation for Verizon, which equals a cost of about seventy-five hundred dollars a year. Um, that has a pass-through of about eighty-one cents per month to our subscribers, there are seven hundred and sixty-three of the subscribers, and we, it's a ten-year con, uh, license, um, and this is half of the, uh, cost for, again, the capital associated with the CATV and the, um, videographer, which is Pedro. So, uh, this is a very scaled back, minimal, um, proposal for Verizon, and will be so for Comcast. Comcast will do their equivalent on this side. So, we are at the point with Verizon now where I'm just looking for you to, uh, tell me if this is a comfortable number for you, we'll finalize the license and then bring it back.
Okay.
Is the Verizon guy here?
And John Harrington is here from Verizon to, uh, help assist us in this conversation.
John Harrington, I'm from the firm Kirby Harrington and Pinkert, uh, I'm a lawyer, I represent Verizon.
Have we been getting, uh, free access from Verizon for our police fire, Public Works, and you, and the senior citizen?
Well, you're certainly entitled to it, I, uh, we, we, we have the hookup.
We what?
We have the hookups.
Free?
Free. Uh, the misnomer is that it's just for TV, it's not for all the other services, and that's been kind of a, an issue of discussion.
So, the monthly cost increase is passed on to ratepayers of eighty-one cents?
Eighty-one cents a month, addition.
How come my bill went up fifty bucks? It's a far cry from eighty-one cents.
Well, uh, it, it may be other services, uh, the programming fees have gone up, uh, but I, I will say this, it's one of the beauties of having two competitors in the community, because it may not lower your bills, but it does slow the pace of increases in your bill.
How much has Comcast gone up?
I think they both go up, I mean, I.
Yeah.
TV used to be free, it's, it's, it's ridiculous now, but whatever.
Well, I, I, I hate to pay eighty-one cents, you know, you're talking eighty-one cents times twelve months. Right?
Right.
And then you get in the, you threw in the, just the muddy up the waters, you know, the three thirty-three and five dollars monthly, you know, the state average for other cities and towns, yeah, but I, you know, I, I don't, you know, who?
That's, that's, that's a law, though, that's a law.
That's, 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 that's kinda like, hello? Throw that number in the sky, or throw that number at 'em. Again, you. For eighty-one cents, you know, I, I can't see why you just, uh, you know, just go with the existing, go with the existing contract. For eighty-one cents, I mean, you guys are making money on this deal.
Well, under the existing contract, uh, the franchise recovery fee at one point was only eight, and it stopped being charged.
What are they paying for rent on the tower?
Uh, that's, that's separate, um, I'm not sure what that rate is at this point, I'd have to research that.
You don't know, you don't know what they're paying for rent for that tower?
No.
Verizon? You pay a rent, you pay for rental?
That's probably Verizon Wireless, this is not, yeah, associated with this contract.
Not that, it's not on the TV on that, on that?
No, that's just for the telephone, uh, cell phones, cellphone tower.
And if you look at the second page in your binder, you see exactly the capital that we're proposing to replace, and.
I see, but you know, you, here we are, you know, we're almost fifty percent senior citizens over here, and they can't afford it, and they can't afford to, uh, you know, you know, you're talking eighty cents, it's like a buck a month, and it's like twelve-hundred dollars a year for them, you know? And, 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 uh, that bothers me, and a twelve-hundred dollar increase for the senior citizens to watch TV. I mean, you charge for everything else, you charge for the Red Sox, you charge for the sports pitch package, I mean, it's like, it's like unbelievable, this is the basic cost, you're gonna go up. I mean, and, and this town is, uh, almost fifty-fifty, I, I would say it's getting close to it, the seniors are getting, uh, out, outdoing the, the juniors, but the seniors, you know, they're on fixed income, social security, and here we are with, with, you know, eighty-one cents, you know, it doesn't seem like a lot, but it is.
I understand what you're saying.
Can you, you understand me? Are you a senior citizen, you know, no? You make, you're a lawyer, you're a lawyer, right? Lawyers make a lot of money. This night, tonight, it's gonna cost Verizon a couple thousand dollars for you being here.
If I, uh.
If I keep talking, and you're gonna pay longer, it'll be another hour charge. So, I, you know, I just, you know, it's just, I, I can't understand why Verizon, just for eighty-one cents, throw it in, throw it in the mix. Maybe, maybe you'll pick up those Comcast customers.
I just go back to the fact that competition is an important aspect of.
Right.
Any service, so, we feel as though we're bringing in a service that applies to everybody, not just senior service, uh, citizens.
Well, I'm not in favor of the increase, let me put it that way, and I can speak my mind, because, you know, I've been on the board for a long time, and I've seen, you know, the increases, and, and they keep coming, no one's standing up for the, uh, for the elderly of this town. No one's standing up and saying, listen, wh, wh, why are you charging them just an extra hundred bucks a month? It's gonna be a hundred bucks a month, you know that and I know, eighty-one cents is, is, is a false hope, that's a false, that's, that's a hookwinking, that's a, that's a hookwinking, you know? Eighty-one cents, by the time they get their bill, it'll be a hundred and five dollars.
Richie, I think that's part of the conversation, the eighty-one cents is all that's attributable to that up there, um, the rest of it is the market will do what the market will do, and we have no control over that.
Yes, we do.
No.
Ah, come on, Jeff.
Nope.
They have a contract here with a, with a, with a, uh, uh, thing.
F R prevents any community from regulating rates.
So, all this identifies is that as part of our, um, understanding with Verizon and Comcast, when they gave up the services they provided us for CATV, that this is what we would require to balance that out, and this is the only piece.
I don't like it.
I, I, I understand.
I just don't like it.
And I, I have to say that Mr. Shelver made it clear that it was an important issue.
Mr. Shelver makes a lot of things clear, but sometimes when I start going back and check and asking questions, it doesn't become very clear anymore to me, you know, you know what I'm saying? No, I understand, I understand, you're, you're representing Verizon, and I can see where you're coming, but I'm representing the, the ta, the taxpayer of this town, and eighty-one cents seems like, you know, just a minimal, but it's an increase, they're already paying over three hundred and fifty, close to four hundred dollars just for TV now.
Well, the eighty-one cents will actually be a decrease from the FRC that has been charged over the last ten years.
Where did this information come from, the state average for other cities and towns, from you?
That came from Bill August, who's our spe, Bill August, who's our special counsel for CATV.
Oh, yeah, sure, where'd it come from?
He, there are databases out that show all the, the licenses.
Of course, I, I would write a favorable re, response and say it's the average, you know, three dollars and five dollars.
Tea?
I agree with Richie. And I, and I tend to also.
What's the ti, what's the timeline on this?
The timeline is we can run it as long as we'd like, however.
No, 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 what's the timeline before we have to file a vote for him? Well, you need to win.
We're negotiating the contract right now.
Oh, you're still negotiating?
Yeah.
I'd say we move it over to the first, let, let me, I, I wanna study this, I, I really wanna, I want you, I like you, no, I really do.
I'm glad you told me.
I like the law firm, I wanna let you know that I like the law firm, and I just wanna see what we can come up with.
Well, so we'll table it to the next meeting, Richie?
Yeah.
We're gonna table this till the next.
See, I, I, I just, we, we just, you know, I just, I just can't sit here and, uh, the elderly of this town, they're paying taxes now, the water and sewer rate's up, I mean, everything's going up, it's like unbelievable, I mean, they can't afford it, they can't afford it, they, you know, they're trying to, you know, they're probably widowed, that's another thing, husband's gone, they can't, they don't wanna move out of Nahat because it's great security, I thought we had great security, I'm not sure after tonight, but, do you understand what I'm saying to you?
I understand completely what you're saying, all I can tell.
Where do you live? Where do you live?
In Wakefield.
Wakefield?
Yep.
Well, that's a big, expensive community, you know.
It's not as nice as Nahat.
Oh, well, Nahat's, uh, we, we can't let the kids swim off the wharf, used to swim there for years, now we can't swim.
The only thing I will say for background, that this, when we got into the business ten years ago, was a big issue.
Yeah.
And it had never been offered in any community in New York, Pennsylvania, Massachusetts, Virginia, any of the communities we do business, it, it just is not something that is a feature that they are.
I understand.
All right, so let's, let's, let's move on.
Can you wait, can you wait a couple of weeks?
We're gonna, we're gonna.
Can you wait a couple of weeks?
We'll work.
And you'll, you'll get to come back again, and then get paid.
We do like you, though.
Yeah, up, back, as long as you want.
Yeah, no, no, one, only once, probably once, that's about it, but.
Thanks, John.
Okay. And if you, if, if in part of your negotiation, can you start reviewing it, if you maybe come back with a fifty cents, a thirty cent increase, and maybe you can see it in your way to negotiate that down.
A decrease would be better.
Work with you on that, I was just trying to meet your cable-related needs.
I always like to ask for things.
We'll, we might go for the extra.
I'm negotiating against myself.
We might go for the fifty cents if you give us all brand-new equipment.
That's, we'll, we'll talk.
State-of-the-art ceiling, you know.
Thank you very much.
Nice meeting you, and thanks for coming.
Next item is.
Yes, one more. Teacher, could I have a follow-up on the, uh, double poles on Fox Hill Road?
Sure.
There are two of them?
I think those have been taken care of, but let me, let me see.
The what? Okay, 'cause I went by the other day, it was still there. I'm sorry, double poles on Fox Hill? Yes.
Well, there's, there's double poles everywhere.
Well.
They need to be done.
I asked for Fox Hill Road.
There's twenty-four, there's twenty-four double poles, and actually it was twenty, it actually was thirty-one, they took down seven, now they got twenty-four left, and they've added probably three or four more, you know, where that car hit the car and went the street, or, uh, Ocean Street, there are double poles in Verizon.
Mr. Nagel from, uh, Will, uh.
Castle Road.
Castle Road. Yeah, I've done, I've done that, did a good job too, so, it needs to be done, along with the, uh.
Well, there's no follow-up.
So, the drainers, I know, the drainers, we want that done, I want it, I want it done this month, before we get into the wet season. What's, what's this Mr. Nagel on Fox Hill Road, on Castle Road, this is before.
He walked around and counted some double poles.
He walked around and counted them, good for him.
He did the whole. That's the whole town.
We have a list somewhere.
Yeah, and he gives it to Marty.
Yeah. Sorry. Okay, okay, so, Jeff, the next.
The next item is the recycling petition, you had asked that we give you an update on the recycling petition that occurred back at the last annual town meeting, it was Article thirty-seven, what it stated was that, uh, the petition would require the owners of all apartment buildings and complexes, five units and up, and condominiums to provide a dumpster specifically for recyclables, and to ensure that those recyclables be processed at a recycling facility. So, um, in speaking with council, uh, we need to add this to our bylaws in order to make it enforceable, so what you'll see in the second page here is a draft warrant article that could be put onto the next annual town meeting, and what it does is amend the bylaws and inserts this in such a way that it's enforceable.
Okay, so, process at a recycling facility and amend it now, Tom?
Basically says the same thing.
But you, you're trying to, what you're trying to say is that you're gonna fine somebody a hundred dollars if they don't recycle?
Correct.
You know, you, you, you do realize that I, um, green communities, I had brought that to light, um, I am very green, I, you know, I, I believe in this whole thing, however, and I'm gonna just tell you how I feel about this whole thing, every apartment building, every dwelling in this town pays a trash fee, Bass Point Apartments pay minimal, uh, the Edge Hill, I think, is it the Edge Hill up here, and the Rocklives, they all pay minimal, they all have the ability to recycle, morally, they should recycle, if they don't, they can put a recycling bin out, they have, absolutely, they can put recycling bins out, I think to impose another fee on them would be wrong, I really do, um, they know that they can recycle, they, all they have to do is take their recycling bin and put it out front, and they have to pick it up, they, they actually pay for that, so, I can't see finding somebody, you're finding people in a built, in five or more, uh, five or more apartments or condos, but you're not gonna find me, if I choose not to recycle, if I throw my stuff in the, in the trash, are they gonna find me? Yeah, Vai, Vai wants to speak on this, go right ahead.
Good evening, it's nice to see you all, um, yeah, so I was the generator of the article.
Okay, hold on for one second, Pedro? Pedro, is this microphone working over here? The N one? Could you, will you come up here and speak, 'cause that, it's, it's just humming and we can't really, yeah. Thank you.
So, I was the person who gathered the signatures for the article, um, what I've been hearing is that people who live in these apartments or condos, some apartments and condos, the, the residents have no opportunity to recycle, now, some do, so, for example, uh, the way I understand it, the condos at the intersection of Wharf and Willow, that unit offers recycling, so all the people in there can take their stuff down and recycle it, and I think even Edge Hill, I believe, I'm not sure, I didn't do the research, also, recycling is provided, 'cause they're honorable, and they do it, but other places do not, and so those residents don't have the opportunity to recycle as the other residents in town do.
But, but they do have the opportunity to, they, they can put out a recycling bin, I mean, anybody can put out a recycling bin, they have to pick it up, because they pay, everybody, I wasn't on the board then, when you guys established the trash fee, the, the places like Richdale and, and all these commercial places, I, I choose to pay the trash fee at my garage, and I, I do recycle there, I recycle a ton of stuff, um, the, these places have to pay a minimal fee, and they have the opportunity to recycle, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so they have, Bass Point Apartments has that ability, the Edge Hill has the ability to do it, they all have the ability, now, I've driven by the Edge, the Edge Hill up here, and I never see recycling bins out, ever.
So, they don't have a, um, they don't have a big dumpster for recycling, then?
So, but, and I understand what you're trying to do, and I think it's a great recycling, I mean, I recycle metal, everything, cardboard, everything, even my waste oil, I burn it.
I know you do.
So, I'm just, to impose another fee on somebody by putting dumpsters, and I don't know if these guys wanna speak on it.
It's not on, it's not on individuals, it's the owner of the unit, so would you want three hundred people on Bass Point to come out with three hundred recycling bins out to the curb?
They, I'm sure they can do something different, well, I mean.
I mean, that's impossible.
When, when.
Where are they gonna store it?
When the Edge Hill had their, um, when the Edge Hill used to put their trash out, you used to see it lined up on, on the street, I mean, that, that's just the way it was.
I think that's hard, I mean, I think that's hard for, speaking of retirees, they would like to recycle, and they're supposed to haul it out to the street, just because their unit isn't, their owner of their property isn't honorable enough to provide a dumpster they can just toddle down to on their way to their cars, or their, you know, senior citizen bus?
So, what happens when they don't recycle, what happens when they just decide to throw it in the trash barrel?
I think that's, I, I'm not even talking about that, I'm talking about the owners of these buildings not being honorable enough to provide a recycling dumpster.
And that's gonna raise their condo fees and their rent.
Well, I, that's why I'm asking you to address the situation, senior citizen, it seems to me if, if mu, if everybody who owns a property in Nahat has the opportunity to put a, 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 you know, a, a container in front of his or her property and recycle, just because you're in, in a collection of apartments or condos and it's more difficult for you, why should you be denied that opportunity just because the owner of the property in which you dwell chooses not to provide a dumpster for it, which would be so simple, they just, when they go out, they just put their little bag in every day, they don't have to have a container, they just take their little bag on their way out to wherever they're going and drop it in the dumpster.
So, who are we targeting? Are we targeting Bass Point Apartments, essentially?
It would be the owners of the properties, I'm not talking about individuals being fined, it would be the owners would take the responsibility of having a recycle, a dumpster for recycling.
Well, there's only one building, there's only, there's only one place that I can recall that would be a bigger apartment building, that would be, 'cause you said that the Edge Hill has the ability to recycle.
I am not sure, I'm, I'm, I've been told that the, um, the condos at the intersection of Wharf and Willow do provide, the owners provide recycling for their residents, the residents do not have to go trotting out with thirty different little containers on the sidewalk, they just go to their building's owner's dumpster for recycling, every time they go, they just drop in their little bag. I'm, I'm not asking you to fine individuals, I'm asking to consider, uh, opportunities for everybody, including senior citizens and the disabled, not to have to haul a container out of their apartment down two, three stories to the street, I mean, how far do they have to carry them for Bass Point to get all the way out to the road, that's, that's ridiculous.
No, I don't, I don't think it would be that, that bad, I mean, it's, it's the way it's always been.
As far as they have to go through that, that gate.
And right here it says, there's a fine, you're asking us to put a fine on that?
I, I didn't ask for it, I'm asking for you to consider it.
Who wrote this up?
We wrote that, I wrote that up, it, you have to have a penalty associated with it or it has no teeth.
Well, they found, I, personally, to me, I feel the penalty should be the owner of the buildings, not the residents.
Correct.
Well, the owner of the building is Francie, that's the only one, the owner of these condos, there's many owners, there's whoever owns the condos, I mean, there's not, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know, but there's.
I don't know anything about this, I'm just trying to make it so that more stuff is recycled, 'cause I think it's good for the planet, it's good for the town.
It's a great, it's a, it's a great thing that you're doing.
I think it's better for individuals, senior citizens, the weak, the whatever, that live, you know, I mean, if you lived at the very end of Bass Point, you had to carry all the way up to whatever that road is, Castle Road or wherever, to put your little bag in a bin that you provided, it is ridiculous, so why not just provide a dumpster, and I think the owner of that property should be like.
I think it's a good idea, why don't we just put it, don't fine them, don't, don't.
Don't need to fine, just tell them that.
No, we don't need fines, just don't, you know, just, you know. The trash free.
The trash free and recycle is all, it's all one contract, am I correct?
It could be one contract.
What do you mean it could be? Do we have one contract on, we?
Oh, you mean ours or for Bass Point?
Our contract with the rubbish per, personnel.
It's one contract.
One contract, so just ask, we'll write letters to the multifamily units, Bass Point, you know, and tell them to just put a recyclable bin out there, I, um.
Dumpster.
A dumpster, so, and then have them pick it up.
But who's, who's gonna pay for that?
They're gonna pay, they're, they're, it's gonna be a part of the contract, they all have contracts with them. They, they all have, they have dumpster contracts with each of these units.
Okay, but so it's gonna raise their, it's gonna raise?
No, they won't, they won't, it can't raise anything, they won't raise anything.
I, I, I think it's, I, I honestly, I would like to see more information on it, I wanna see if the rent's gonna go up, and I wanna see if their, their condo fees are gonna go up, if, if we have to have that dumpster over there.
Well, we're gonna have to have someone go out there and interview them, town administrator, uh.
I am not, I am not at liberty, listen, we're, we're, we're here to protect taxpayers of the town.
I don't think they're, they're, they're charging, they're, they're not charging them for trash now, are they?
Sure, they, they, they have a dumpster, they have to pay for that, but they, but they pay, they also pay a fee to the town.
That's all part of the rent.
But they can, they can, they have the ability to recycle now, they have the ability to put a recycling bin out, they, we, they pay for it already, so you, what you're doing is you're double charging them.
They don't allow them to put the individual recycle bin in front of the apartment, she's talking about taking the recycle out to Castle Road, which, no, the dumpsters are over there now, yeah, uh, they're gonna have to put a recycle dumpster right next to it, and so you put the trash in one and the recyclable in the other, it's a very simple thing.
If it's gonna cost them money, my answer is no.
We gotta find, we gotta find out.
Enzo, I guess I would say when you look at our contract, um, the recycling is free, because presumably there's a value to recycling.
So, Waste Management will put a, a free dumpster at Bass Point Apartments?
No, 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 what, what I'm saying is that in our contract, the, um, the recycling component of it is free because of the value of the recycling.
Right.
So, they redeem it, um, I, that would be the same concept, I would imagine, for Bass Point Apartments and others.
Does, Bass Point Apartments have a separate contract with the trash hall?
They do.
Okay, so, you, we, it's not involved with us?
Yes, not us.
You need to find out from Francie, from the Edge Hill, uh, we need to find out from Francie, the Edge Hill, the Rocklives, if it's gonna cost them any more money, my answer is absolutely no.
The condos down, the condos down on Connor Wharf Street?
That's the Rock, the Rocklives I'm referring to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the, the old Rocklives, the nursing home, but, um, if it's gonna cost them any extra money, my answer is I can tell you right now, well, no, um, I, I'm for the concept of recycling, but I'm also not for giving people extra fees where not needed. All right, then we should table this till we get the answers. And take the fine off there. Uh, the fine could be, uh, eighty-one cents. Well, I think we vote on everything when we get the answers.
Right.
I'm just kidding, uh. Because Enzo said it can't happen, you know? I'm just telling you, I don't, I'm not gonna, I won't fall for it, if it's gonna cost those people any extra money, I won't fall for it.
Yes.
Okay, so, we'll, we'll table that and bring that back, um, the next items are Um, the next items are the surplus designation. We have a designation request from the fire department and the DPW. Fire is for two boat motors and then DPW is for, um, a riding mower and miscellaneous piping. And we have motions on both of those.
Richie, Richie, wanna do that motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to declare the following equipment surplus as requested by the fire chief, Michael Feinberg. Yamaha four-power, four-stroke outboard motor, um, boat motor and a Honda twenty horsepower, four-stroke outboard motor.
Second.
Okay, uh, discussion. Seeing and hearing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion carries. Uh, next.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to declare the following equipment surplus as requested by DPW Superintendent Dennis Paul. John Deere fourteen thirty-five diesel ride-on lawnmower and miscellaneous ductile INH DPE and PVC pipes.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, uh, all those in favor signify, uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you. At the last meeting, we had a discussion regarding beaches and some of the problems we were seeing down at Doggy Beach or hearing about down at Doggy Beach. We have Scott Greaves here today to, um, talk to us about a report that he provided us and it just gives some background information about what, what is down there and what's happening. So Scott, if you could come forward. I'd probably just sit there at the end. That's great. Thank you.
Scott Greaves.
Animal Control Officer.
You can pick that microphone up.
Hi Richie.
Hi. Where's your dog officer shirt? Don't we provide you with a uniform?
We do.
We do, all right.
So anyway, we, we have a report before us. Um, do you wanna walk through that report?
Um, as a per request of Rome View, continue to allow use of Doggy Beach as an area that both local and other from out of town Nahant, Nahants are welcome to use year-round to utilize this free access area for individuals to bring their pets to run freely. Please find the following. All surrounding area beaches are closed from May first to September thirtieth to access for dogs other than Doggy Beach. Doggy Beach has become an internet sensation for open access for individuals to bring their pets, most often dogs. In two thousand sixteen, there were three incidents of dogs with aggressive behavior resulting in dog bites. They're required Nahant Police or the ACO to respond to the complaints. Local residents in the area and most specified those who are budding neighbors to Doggy Beach have related to me multiple, multiple insist of, uh, fractions of regarding visiting dogs coming up to their home back porch from the beach with aggressive behavior as well as unknown after the pet owners allow them to run loose on the beach areas. Leading to safety concerns. At any time as the ACO, when I have patrol Doggy Beach, I have less frequently met, uh, frequently residents of Nahant and more often have met individuals from out of town that I have talked to. These individual, individuals have been from Western Mass in Connecticut and telling me they come frequently to the beach due to the ease use. I have also seen many cases of dog sitters, dog walkers who utilize Doggy Beach on a daily basis to walk their pets for daily in groups of three, six dogs at a time. Many dogs are unattended at Doggy Beach with owners of dogs not in control of the dogs, allowing the dogs to run freely and far away and out of eyesight of the owner.
So what's your recommendation?
I just, I don't have a recommendation other than what I, what I see.
Well, you're, you're the dog officer. You should know what, what you think we should do. I mean.
Well, Scott, you were talking.
Well, I, 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 it's a liability to the town of Nahant. It's just a matter of time before something does go wrong.
So are you saying we should? Well, first of all, Doggy Beach was, was, um, established by a town meeting. But I believe it was established for Nahant residents only. So, am I right? Well, that was the intent, yes. Okay, so it's for Nahant residents, but I think if we look back, I would ask, uh, to get the transcripts, uh, ask the town clerk maybe to get the transcripts uh, of that town meeting to find out if in fact it is and then we limit it to Nahant residents because you can't have commercial dog walkers down there. Number one. Number two, and this might be a touchy subject, but the dune, they park, they, they can't park on the dune anymore. The police have to stop them from doing that. It's against the law.
So the area right across from Little Nahant Road?
Yeah, I mean, you're not supposed to park on a dune. They, they are a protected area. So, and if you look down a little bit further where the, the, and my, my wife doesn't really like that, but the, the, the old, the growing of the, uh, um, the rose bushes and, and the dune has, has gotten much bigger. A lot of people don't like it, but you know something? It, it aids the town when we have a huge storm and the water tries to come over. It stops it. So it's a good thing. And the more they crush that dune, the more they get on that dune, they're gonna ruin it. And it's just creates more problems. You can see the sand coming over now. That's gonna be stopped and I think you need to stop the dogs. I mean, I do see them, DCR, um, I guess there was a dog, woman had a dog down the beach, uh, I call it Lynn Beach. And, um, they told her, she had to leave and they told her point-blank, go over across the street. You can bring your dog over there. And it's becoming an issue, so. And I have a dog, um, but I think it, if, if you're saying it's out of control, then I think we need to do something about it and enforce what we have on the books. And if it's for Nahant residents, then that's the way it has to be.
How are you gonna do that with just Nahant residents only?
Yeah, and you're also looking at a public beach.
Can't close the beach at all to Nahant residents because it's a public beach.
It's not a public beach to the dogs. I mean, where, where, where do we have, what town in the, in the, in the, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has a dog beach?
Prison lot.
How about Connecticut? How about Rhode Island? How about California?
Massachusetts.
I mean, we have a dog beach in Nahant, okay? And, and people understand this and, again, I have a dog. I love my dog. But dogs can be dogs and, you know, you, you can't have commercial people down there. It started out as a great thing and perhaps it's, perhaps it needs to go back to town meeting. I, I wouldn't send it back to town meeting. You've got a problem down there. Yeah. Actually, you've got two problems. One is the dogs. It's out of control. I see the dogs running back and forth and the people and the dogs are, there's no leash law down there. And, uh, every time we test the water down there, it fails.
We got a letter from a resident in Nahant. Did it surface, Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah, it's also in the book.
We got that. And they, they run up on their decks.
Yeah.
Long Castle Row. I think we closed it, I closed the beach. I think it's, I think it's a time, again, it was a good thing in the beginning and then the townspeople really don't take their dogs down there because they're afraid they're getting, they're gonna get bit because these dogs are running loose. And you've got some, you've got some big dogs down there, German Shepherds and pit bulls and, and that's why you got the problem. I think we should ban closed Doggy Beach. Let me ask you this. And, and I'll be honest with you, you know, I, you know. Are they supposed to be leashed down there? No. They can be off their leash on the beach? Yeah.
Well, they call it Doggy Beach.
That's why they, they run loose. They run up on the thing and they're from, they're, they're, all these dogs are coming from Lynn Beach. I don't know, they're parking over there somewhere, but they're up in, uh, Powell Road. They park up there and they, they circle around. I mean, they're, they know exactly where to park. Well, again, that's another, that's, that's another issue. That's a parking and towing. I mean, I've never seen anything like it in my life. If you close Doggy Beach, you should close it. And the same time, if you're gonna close it with the dogs, you should close it for the kite flyers. That's a too dangerous, that's a beach that should never allow these kite flying because of the rocks down there. They're flying, the wind, I mean, they're picking up, we had an incident the other day. Girl, come in. She, she had to cut her, her kite, but she banged into the, into the rocks. That's the second or third major, major, you know, hit. I mean, you know, Lynn Beach is perfect for it. Let them go, you know, sail off Lynn Beach. If they get blown in, they hit sand. They don't hit rocks like we've got down there. And the people, the problem, the, everyone's taking up this sport. They're all young. Of course, you gotta be in great shape. They haven't built a kite big enough for me yet, you know what I mean? It would be, have to be a double tandem. But the wind takes those surfers right into the rocks. And they, and, 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 and most of them don't have helmets and they're getting banged up. She got banged up and then her kite hit a bicycle, okay? Coming across the causeway and, uh, he got hurt. That kite went right into his face. So I, you know, I'm ready to, I'm ready to vote on that. If you wanna wait a couple weeks and think it all over, but I, I'm ready to shut that thing down before, before we really get, you know, have a real, I mean, we got serious problems now. But those two things we should just ban. The dogs, because it's out of control. You're talking thirty, forty dogs down there and, and they're running wild because we don't have no leash law. And the leash law is not the problem. They could, huh?
The owners.
Absolutely. Uh, Chief, did you wanna say something?
Thank you. Um, this has been out of control for probably three years that I can, I can figure.
It's been on for four years now.
About three or four years.
Just getting more.
A couple of times I've walked down by there and had some of the people come out and tell me that I was walking on their property because they owned to low tide because I had my dog. It, that's, that's pushing it to, for me. But I understand their pain, the old famous saying. And this letter tells it like it is. The original plan, I remember the town meeting here being a disaster for a, a day and a half. People fighting over Doggy Beach. I think if this was brought up again, people would say, let's get rid of it. I, I, I'm in favor of what Richie says, but I'd like to think it over and that was a good thought. Just till the next meeting or the meeting after because I won't be here. But this, people writing letters, this, this, this letter is, says it right on. The original plan or idea was okay. There were a lot of dog lovers. They're mostly out of towns. So.
Right, mostly of them are.
I, Richie and I brought it up a few times this past summer and if we can't come up with something, we should think about closing it. Again, even for that word liability. Thank you.
Well, some of, you know. All right, now, okay, and I would agree too. It's, it's, it is out of control. Uh, I, I do see, and, and I hate to say it, but you know, because again, I, I, I love dogs, but, um, it, it's out of control. And, uh, as far as the, the kite surfing, you know, it's a nice, it's a great thing, but, you know, that guy got clipped. And if that was a car that was going by, let me tell you something, it would have been a major traffic accident. So we can't have that. Well, I mean, it's. You can't put up a net swarm. We can't do any of that and we'll likely get sued. And, and I, I'm not saying that the town could get sued for, you know, for somebody getting hurt down there.
Correct.
But we have to defend ourselves and that costs money. We'd have to defend, anybody can sue anybody, but what I'm saying is if this guy decided to turn around and say, sue the town because he got hurt because of a kite surfer, we'd have to defend ourselves.
So Maya would defend us on that? And we've had incidents just recently with people who, uh, have injured themselves in similar ways and Maya just takes care of it and deals with it, so.
But then our rates go up. The insurance rates go up. There is always a cost affiliated with it, so I think it's better safe than sorry. I don't wanna see somebody get hurt. Um, so we need to do something about it and we need to do something about it soon. You won't let the kids swim after a while, but you allow them to, kites into rocks. That's what they're, they're, they're surfing into, into rocks. And those rocks, I, I'm telling you, and they're flying. They're going twenty, thirty miles an hour. They're not going, you know, five miles an hour. And they're brand new to the sport. Some of them don't wear helmets and that's why I tell you, and it, and it's getting, you saw there, you see, first it was one or two, now it's like ten or twelve and you see all these kites. I don't understand the problems they won't, the problem is they're very difficult beach, you know? It's, it's, it's a safety hazard. Someone's gonna, we're gonna get nailed. I think so.
Town Council's here and, uh, Dan, is that possible to restrict kite sailing in, in the beach? Okay.
And they also, we should tell the police, very simple. You know, I like to stop, they're parking up in the grass, you know, the dune there. And they're unloading, loading trucks, vans. I mean, it's like, it's like, it's like, it's like Grand Central Station down there. And people trying to coming to town or going out of town. These vehicles are trying to get over the, over the side thing, the curb and, and they're out in the middle of the highway. They're making U-turns too. That's the other thing. They pack up on the side, then they come out and take a, instead of going right, you know, normally, they make a U-turn and go out of town. And that's usually the ones, you know, and, you know. And the other thing, it's like we're allowing bicycles. The police should be notified, but bicycles on the causeway. I don't know why we don't enforce that. Town of Nahant and the state police. We should write a letter. I mean, they're riding bikes across that causeway. I mean, they think it's like, uh, you know, it's like riding a bike on the Mass Pike. Are you kidding me? I mean, these people going, you know, they're, they're not driving a speed limit across that causeway, especially at night. Guy's gonna, he's got three bikes, gonna get flashing lights and it's, what the hell is he doing out here in the middle? You can't see him. That's a no-no. They're not supposed to be riding on that. Well, we should, we, we gotta enforce that. We haven't done that. We should notify the state police too to tell them too. That's their road. And I would call the MBTA also. There was four buses in Nahant today doing practice, um, driver education.
Really?
And they tied up the whole town.
Two-one flash road.
Right, and, and they, they were making corners. Corners where they're not gonna make corners normally. And let me tell you something, they almost took out the island, uh, down there at, uh, where the old pharmacy was, so. And, and they're learning. I understand that, but.
Yeah, no.
Nahant's not the practice town. I got that every weekend with, with these, uh, huge, huge Sina Cruises. Next, okay. Huge Sina Cruises. Um, I, I do wanna say, Scott, one more thing.
Hang on.
One more thing. There was a dog incident, um, on July eleventh? Okay, um, I think you need to, we need to talk about this.
We'll have a report this, uh, Friday?
Yeah, I've, I've spoken with, uh, Scott and asked for a report on it so we could just take a look at that issue. As you know, it surfaced this Monday and, uh, by Tuesday, end of day, it was resolved for purposes of payment. Um, so now we're just gonna look and see what happened.
And I think you dodged the bullet. I'll say that again with this person, okay?
Yeah, no, this, this.
So I think what we need to do is we need to have a certain protocol in place where how you're gonna, rules you're gonna follow with the town uh, as far as licensing and the whole nine yards, okay?
Yeah, so, so we, we can, we can talk Friday.
What do I do with license?
No, no, just.
When you need to find out who has a license, you need to go to the proper places, uh, when.
Public discussion.
The Selectmen's Office does the same thing.
So if you submit the report on Friday, I'll, I'll, I'll take a look at it and we'll talk and then we'll bring it to the Selectmen.
No, I, I, I wanna see the report right away. I mean, because I'm looking at dates right here, Jeff, okay? That happened on July eleventh and we're, now we're talking, this is August what?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, okay. So I have all the dates down here. August eleventh it was reported.
Thank you, Scott.
July twenty-fifth, uh, he can say, on July twenty-fifth, this woman had to call the, uh, police station to find out if this dog was licensed.
Yeah, thus.
And you told, you told the person that, you told this person that that dog was licensed, am I right? You never told her that the dog was licensed. It's written right here.
But, but again, this, this is for a later discussion, so, um, I've asked for a report. We'll get the report and I'll share it with you.
This is not a later discussion.
It is.
It's a discussion I'm gonna discuss right now, Jeff. If you don't, if you don't like it, you don't have to listen to it. But I'm telling you, you can't go from July eleventh to the twenty-fifth without finding out if the dog was licensed. She was frustrated, just like Peter Rogal was frustrated, okay? They're not getting anywhere and they are gonna get somewhere. Is my, do I make myself clear? Okay, well. Who told you about the dog bite? She called you? Is it true that, how long did you, how soon?
So, so.
How soon, how soon, excuse me? You were in contact with her the whole time? I get the letter right here. How long, how long did it take you to get back to her? That's.
This, this, this has a legal bearing, so what I'd like to do is hold off the conversation till we get the report and, uh, I'll, I'll share it with you and we can talk it through. But I don't wanna get it into a situation where we have some liability.
I don't believe it has a legal bearing. What I believe it has is this woman is very satisfied now.
She is.
Okay?
She is.
And she's, and you're lucky, okay? And there is on the, uh, let me see, the fourteen, fifteenth? I'm not, I'm not exactly sure when you gave her false information. You told her that the dog was licensed.
Again, again, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with the fact that this has legal implications.
The woman knows that. She was told that.
I know, I know, but she's, she's not pursuing this and she doesn't want a hearing.
So what I'm trying to tell you is this sort of nonsense is gonna stop.
And I hear you.
They're gonna get truthful answers. There's gonna be a protocol. They're gonna have to find out from the person at the licensing agent of this town.
But you're making.
Okay.
You're making assumptions on partial information. I want all the information.
Okay, so I'll have your report and then we'll sit down as a group and talk about this, okay? Very good.
Yes, thank you, Scott. Really appreciate it.
I have the timelines here, Jeff. Ridiculous.
I've, I've seen the timelines.
Okay, ridiculous. I'd like to know what happens in the weekly call report. When people get a complaint, they call the town hall and I've never seen, never seen one after we mentioned it.
We have very few complaints.
We what?
We have very few complaints, and most of them are, when we have any input from the public, it's a work order request.
Okay.
Well, that will be a later discussion.
Right, okay, let's go on to the next, quarterly billing review.
Quarterly billing, so you would ask to take a look at water, sewer, trash, and taxes as to if we remove to quarterly billing. As you know, we have various different patterns for billing, so for water and sewers, triannual, trash is annual, and the taxes are every six months. So if you were to adjust all of them to quarterly, it's approximately fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred per additional cycle for each of these, so, you know, you're looking at approximately five thousand dollars increase. But if you look at the savings, we're really looking at probably a cost of about one thousand one hundred dollars. So if you look at the savings in the process and the savings in the time, you know, you got, you got about a thousand dollar cost extra if we go quarterly on all of those. So that's the information you really need to consider going quarterly on, on these items. And that's what you'd ask for, so I think the next discussion would be, do you want to try quarterly on some of these?
So the net cost would be eleven hundred dollars, that's mostly postage?
Mostly postage, yeah, and processing through the software programs.
Let's move this for the next couple of weeks, is that up to review this?
Let's table it.
This is a lot to, lot to take in, I mean, quarterly billing would be, you know, you'd be increasing your cash flow with the Treasurers' Office tremendously. For the scene is, it'd be a better fix for them to spread out over twelve months. You know, you give an estimate exactly what it is, and to have them look at it.
Right.
The main benefit...
And, you know, how much their taxes is, how much is their water bill, water and sewer bill, how much is their real estate bill, you know? Probably a good move, I think it's a good move to go quarterly billing, spread it out. So instead of them getting whacked, you know, right out of the box, you know, once a year for this, you know?
And they're gonna, because the water and sewer rates are gonna go up, they have to because of...
Well, we keep having sewer breaks is gonna go up, well, it's gonna go up now.
One of the main benefits is that we currently do...
We have to invest in that, we have to invest in these programs, water and sewer, we just can't let it go. When people write a report, we've gotta get a copy of that report in a timely fashion, so we can read it and make adjustments. We need to get that, that deck, you know, it was written, you know, last year, we get it in March, April, after, after the fact.
So one of the principal benefits of going to quarterly is that we do RANs every year, which is Revenue Anticipation Notes, and the cost is about eight thousand dollars. And so we would be foregoing that because our cash flow would be positive.
It's a, it's a, it's a money saver, it should be, by the time you, believe me.
I don't understand the eleven hundred dollars in cost, though.
Well, we have to go through that, that, that number is, I think it's...
I wanna see that, break that down for us.
Well, we need more information.
Sure, you have the cost up here in the, above that, but I can break it down even further.
You need to, you need to review it.
Right.
Each by line item.
First of all, gentlemen, this was just a discussion, there wasn't even a vote of anything, and he put it together for us. Now, we can digest it and then have an actual motion with a second, and then discussion at some point.
All right, so let's, let's...
I'm, I'm with Richie, we should look into this.
Right.
I'll put it on a future agenda for discussion. Okay, great, that's all I have for town administrator report.
Okay, old business, I see none, new business, Attorney General's Office ruling, review?
We have counsel here to assist in the conversation, if you'd like that.
I want, Richie, wanna speak on it?
I'd rather, I'd rather carry this over, I, I, there's something wrong here. I mean, I saw your, your both responses, and it seemed like we made very light response of the AG's comments. And I heard, I heard things about the individual that caused all these problems. And I, I just, I'd like to have a chance to review it and with counsel. And I think it should be reviewed in executive session too. I think they'll help us, all right, so we can speak freely in executive session on the individual that filed these complaints, and the problems that he had, why did he have it, and why wasn't someone taking care of it? Instead of, instead, instead of frustrating him to the point he had a right to the Attorney General. I mean, I realize factors are there, but I wanna sit down in executive session and review that. Well, I mean, you can bring it, I, I just, I just think we should, because...
Well, I put this on the agenda because you, you asked me.
No, no, I, I know, but I realize I gotta see the notes on that from Dan and Jeff, because the responses from the two of you are just, I kinda said, wow, it's kinda, it's kinda light, just like, you know, we're not at fault at this thing. And the AG said just the opposite, so I, I wanna review that.
Sure, I can have Dan talk with you and sue him.
No, I don't want to talk with just me, I want to talk with the board.
I, I don't think it should be done.
I don't think we just talk, just, just me, I want to talk with the board. I had put it on there because I want the board to hear it too.
I think it should be done in, in public, though, honestly, I mean...
Well, we can, we can release the minutes after the public meeting.
No, I, I think, listen, you know...
Because you have to bring up, you have to bring up names, and I don't want to do that.
I'm not gonna bring up anybody's name. The report was done on one, on the, the Administrator's Office, and it was over reporting, you know, posting meetings, am I right?
Yes, open meeting law.
Open meeting law, okay, so it's important that, first of all, we're obligated to let people know what's going on. And we're obligated to let, people should be able to come and speak their mind at different meetings, okay? And they should be posted, nothing should be private, unless it's, we're talking about an individual person, okay? An executive session when it comes to contracts, or a, an individual that works for the town, okay? And they have to know about it. So, I think, moving forward, I think it should have been dealt with a little bit better. I think, you know, the Attorney General, you know, came down pretty hard, and I think that moving forward, postings should be taken seriously. And transparency should be taken seriously in this town. And the lack of thereof, because there is an awful, there's a lack of it in some, in some instances, and I'm not, quite frankly, I'm not pleased with that. So we are gonna work on that, am I right?
Well, if you go back to the original makeup of that committee, the town administrator appointed every one of those members of the committee. The Board of Selectmen had no input into that. And then the, but you wanted the Board of Selectmen to come and give you a final vote and recommend that master plan without us even having input, asking us for individuals to be on that committee? We were, we were not informed of nothing, next, next thing I know, we've got a, a master plan, recreational master plan, and I've got people upset with me, because we voted for it. You appointed the committee, and the board never even had a shot at it, I didn't even know about it. Until, until the design engineer, the engineer that wrote it all up, suggested to me and says, wow, where's this coming from? And next thing you know, it's like, now all of a sudden, I got a letter from the AG's office, a copy of the AG's office, and, and saying, wow, this is, this is, you know, I, I, I just, I'm very frustrated with that whole situation. How that came down, how did it developed, and the board was completely blindsided on this whole thing. And next thing I know, I got the Attorney General, and I made some calls because I have friends up there, and they said, start taking this stuff seriously. If they ever received a copy of your, your response to the board, or what you wrote up, if they ever received a copy of that, I would guarantee they'd be down here Monday morning checking everything. That response was very, very poorly written, and I, and I...
I would disagree, but, I would disagree, but...
You disagree, of course you disagree, you would, you would disagree, and you'd have your counsel, you were appointed, he agreed with you.
Town council?
The Board of Selectmen, what are we, Trump or whatever? I mean, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter what we do or say or anything, you do it what you want. You appointed every one of those committee people, and then you came to us and asked us, you asked us for a, a recommendation to approve it. And I'm sitting here, who voted for this? Who appointed these members? I asked Enzo, I asked T, no, we never, no, no, would you ask? No, were you asked for that committee?
No.
And T, you know, you talk about, and then all of a sudden, we got, I can't use the word to describe them, but, you know...
I just think we need to be more, transparency is the biggest thing, and it's, it's gonna bite us each and every time if you don't, if you're not, and I, moving forward, we are gonna work on that, I can tell you that right now. This town hall is gonna work on that, and we are gonna tell people exactly what's going on, and what's this executive session. And that's how I'm gonna handle things, as long as I'm the chairman, that's how I'm gonna handle it.
This individual attacked one of the, I, I would say she's one of the best individuals and best committees out of the blue, and I said, I couldn't believe it, couldn't believe it, and that, that was, it's another incident, but this is the individual we're dealing with.
It's got nothing to do, it's got nothing to do with him, or her, or whoever it is.
I understand, but I, I just...
It has to do with is that the Attorney General doesn't take any one person.
No, 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 no.
They just look at the situation, this situation, and they said, and they agree with them.
Yeah.
So that's the bottom line, and we owe it to people to let them know what's going on. And, and that's just my opinion, and, and, you know, you might disagree with me, but I can tell you, moving forward, we need to be, meetings need to be posted, ad hoc committees don't deal with money, there was money dealt with this in this, in this committee, so we need to, we need to, you know, cross our Ts and dot our Is, and, and we need to be more transparent to people. I, I know I am, so the town hall needs to be.
And the assertion is that town hall isn't, and it is, so I just want to put that into the record.
Okay, T? What surprised me most about this was, well, no, a lot of it surprised me, but the fact that the, the committee was named two different names, and the, the AG had said they had posted meetings under two different names, which was totally confusing to me, especially since I'm a selectman, that I should have known about this. So I agree with a hundred percent that we have to, we have to be transparent up here, but that also means that if someone stops and says something to you, it can't become world famous around town. They have to come to this meeting and talk to us about what they want, or like, or dislike. That's transparency to me, downstairs having special meetings, gone, as far as I'm concerned. We have everything here, we become transparent to the public, so people ask me stuff, I'm able to understand it. I sent an email to everyone asking if we could have weekly updates, plain and simple, weekly updates, instead of phone calls, because phone calls are ridiculous because you can get in trouble. Just a quick update, and that's where, so we can know what's going on in the town with weekly updates. Nothing that can get us in trouble, but the Board of Selectmen has to know what's going on, thank you.
Okay. Richie, you all set now on that one?
That's fair.
Okay, next, me, pardon, on the new business is public pathways. We are having a problem up in Little Nahant, a gentleman that lives up there is getting very frustrated because there are individuals that are encroaching on public right-of-ways. It, it, it happened on Willa Road too, if I'm not mistaken, right near Richie's house, where somebody thinks that they own the land and they don't. I own a piece of property on Spring Road, and I can tell you, there's a right-of-way next to me. I don't have a problem with it, it is what it is. If it's deeded, if these people, these people have to understand, if there's rights-of-ways, you can't block them, and they're gonna have to stop. And if need be, get a backhoe over there and dig it up, pull the stuff out, because, that's just my opinion, okay? Because, one, they have to prove, it shouldn't cost the town any money, they have to prove that they own it. We don't have to prove anything, because we do own it. There's rights-of-ways everywhere, this guy can't go fishing, the, the, the people think that they can just close everything in, all right? And this is happening all over town, and it's gotta stop. So my feeling is, the planning board needs to put together a list of right-of-ways, and sooner than later, and then we need to go out and check them all.
They've actually done that work, so they have surveys of all the public pathways, especially around Little Nahant, and they have pictures, and then they have information related to the history of them. So they've done an excellent job in doing that. I think counsel can maybe talk to the fact that retrieving these and getting them back into a state as their original state is difficult, but it can be done, and it can be costly, correct? No, you're up on Little Nahant Road by Lennox.
All of them, I mean, if they just, if they're encroaching on them, they, they have to stop, and they have, and, and... I don't think that we, I mean, there's one gentleman that said that he could, he, if you open up that right-of-way, he has enough people to pay for the stairs that would go back that were taken out. Now, the stairs are probably rickety.
Yes.
And they were probably no good. I don't think that the town should have to be responsible for that, but to block a right-of-way is a big mistake, and it, it has to stop. I think T would attest to that too, and we grew up in town where there was rights-of-ways everywhere, and no one ever complained, no one ever did anything about it, we just did it, and that was the end of it. And now it's becoming a problem, and it needs to be dealt with.
I just don't, I, I agree with you, and it's something we can move forward with, it will have a budget associated with it.
Right, right.
And that's the difficult part, because we don't have a budget for that.
Well, why would there be a budget associated with, with taking back what we already own?
Because we'd have to, we now have the surveys, we can use those surveys, but then legal counsel would have to get involved in wrestling it back, if you will, notifying the property owners that we are reclaiming it, and that we're requesting that it be returned to its original state. If we don't request return to original state, we'd have to do the work to do that. And so the, the wrestling back of the properties can be easy in some situations and difficult in others. We have a situation now where we're having somebody contest whether we own a park, and we're having to survey the park just to determine...
Oh, I know that.
Yeah, I know, but that's what I'm saying, that's, it goes from the sublime to the ridiculous.
And that has to do with rats.
Oh, I know, no, but I'm just saying that you're, you're having a situation where an obvious park is being questioned as to whether he owns it or we own it.
Well, after we find out that we own it, send them a bill.
Yeah.
Okay, after we find out we own the one in Little Nahant, send them a bill. Nobody has the right to take over a piece of property that they know is a right-of-way, I think that they would probably, they might lose in court, I don't know, would they? Okay, so if we have to restore it, send them a bill. Any more?
In my particular instance, this was a hedge that was three feet wide, I used to run down that, through the hedge, everybody did. Suddenly it became one hedge up the middle, and everyone lost everything. And I have a map that says it's a right-of-way, I mean, I'm sure there's that all over town, and I was wondering, could we get a copy of the planning board's report?
Certainly, there's a packet, and then I'll also give you a map that shows where they are, and I'll talk to counsel about estimation on what it would cost legally to pursue all of this.
And the signs, they took the signs down.
Oh, yeah, the signs disappear.
The signs were taken down, and the perambulation used to happen every year, Mikey Billy used to do it, Carolyn Cumming Saxton, there was a bunch of them, because I used to live up in James Avenue, they would come around, you'd see them out there hanging around, and there was a sign there, and, and, just the way it is. I mean, those, those are all rights-of-ways up there, the town stairs, those are right-of-ways, to get people from one end of the town to the other. And they were all deeded, and again, send them a bill, if they're blocking them off, send them a bill.
Let me take a look at our report back.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, green communities, again, this is a good thing, we had a meeting the other night, T and I were there, and we had a, a very good turnout. Neil Duffy, he lives in Swampscott, is the Northeast Coordinator, and Tony Balaletta, who is actually the, you know, runs the whole program, he's from Nahant. We're here to explain the whole thing, we had a minor glitch with the computer, but we got rolling, so, and we, there's an awful lot of enthusiasm. So at this point, I think we can move forward in the point, if you guys are okay with appointing these people. You are?
Sure.
Okay, T, you're okay with it, right? So, there's actually this... So, um, there's actually this quite a few of them. And he, he suggested that we have quite a few people on it, because it's a lot of work. So, we have Margaret Alexander, um, I want to appoint her, uh, well, we want to appoint her, Meredith Tebow from the school, uh, gentleman by the name of Chet Hopkins, that I think Jeff talked to.
Yep.
Diane Montieth, uh, and Abby Roberts, Susan Thomas, uh, and Nicole Logan, uh, Johnny Zimmerman Ward, that's, uh, Austin's wife.
Okay.
She wants to be on it.
Yep.
Nick Bochrone, Terry Motley, uh, Ellen Quigley, and Lisa Haley. And also, in addition to that, I just wanna mention that Margaret Alexander and Diana Brandy have come through with the, with the op- for the Open Space Committee, they wanna be appointed to that. We're gonna revive the Open Space Committee, which we desperately need to do, cause if we don't, we don't get grant money.
With us again?
Margaret Alexander and Diana Brandy.
Okay.
They wanna start that up again, and I, I'm willing to work with you guys on that, too. So, um, let's get the appointment letters to all of them, and, um...
How long do you wanna appoint them for?
Huh?
How long do you wanna appoint them for?
Just a year, a year at a time?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that fine?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I think it's a good thing, uh, we have the opportunity to, um, we talked about this by and I-
Why don't you give that list to Jeff?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if I could take that, I'll write it up and send you.
Buying the streetlights from the, and then you change them over to LEDs, um, so, it's a, it's a good thing. It's gonna save the town money, and it's gonna get us plenty of grant money, too. Stuff that you like. So, um, if that's okay, uh, I would like to send them out.
Okay.
All right.
Do you wanna vote?
Yeah, uh...
I'll ma- I'll make the motion.
Okay. We'll have to wait for T. We'll give them a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Why don't you get on the next agenda?
All right. We'll do, wanna go to the next thing? Well, one thing is missing, uh, the golf course is off.
Wanna do Warfenger and Harbor Master, since we-
Appointments?
Yeah.
Oh, here's T now.
Yeah, we're...
So...
Which, which, Richie made this motion to accept these individuals for the committee.
Second.
Second.
Second, okay, discussion?
It's gonna be a great committee.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, the motion carries, so we've all been appointed.
And that's for both committees, Open Space?
Well, no, the Open Space is just two people.
Okay.
All right? Diana and, and, uh, Margaret.
Yep.
And the other one is for, um, oh, is for the, uh, green committees.
I'll, uh, pass, I'll pass these, uh, Open Space to, uh, Dave Conlon, cause he's the appointee.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, good. All right, that's great. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, uh, fire department letter?
Mr. Fire Chief?
We talked this afternoon, um, I, we don't have a ish, a letter, so there's no issue.
We don't have a letter?
Yep.
I have the letter here. I have the letter from the fire union, signed by Mr. Firefighter Ant, dated July 4th. What's today's date?
August 6th.
I just got this. And you told me when I asked you the question, where is this fire letter? Was it yours response, the, you said the firefighters had such a good time training that they took the letter back. Am I correct?
No.
No, that, no, that's the first time, when you told me, you said, the letter, uh, the firefighters took it back.
What I said was, it was submitted for record to the chief, but was not formally submitted. Because there are two CCs that they should've said-
No, you didn't say that to me. You told me, this letter here was taken back.
You said the same thing to me, too, Jeff.
I think, I think we're, I think we're saying the same thing, is that they, they basically submitted it and said that they were not gonna send the two CCs.
I, and number one, number one, I asked the fire chief to be here tonight. And I, I've told you about this for two or three weeks. He was on vacation last week. Why isn't he here when I asked for a department head to be here?
Because I told you, we had, this is an inappropriate conversation.
This is inappropriate?
Yes.
Oh, it is? So, now, do you know what this letter's about?
I understand what it's about, yes.
Have you read it?
No.
It does say CC Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator on it.
But neither of us have received it. And so, the reason this is an inappropriate, uh, conversation is because that creates an accusation, and we should be researching this before we-
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen. The individual that wrote this memo asked me about it. And I said, I haven't received it, I haven't seen it. And then I told him, I got back to him, said, you guys withdrew it. Now, is, is there a firefighter here, uh, one of the union, you here? Did your, did your union withdraw this letter?
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not.
And I think what I should do is look into this and investigate this, because we have two different storylines, and I can't say which one is true, but I have the department head and myself, who, I can corroborate the fact that, uh, I didn't receive it. So consequently, the CC that he says is not forthcoming corroborates his, uh, story.
The, the problem, the, the-
This is, let, let me finish with my-
I'm sorry.
This is unbelievable.
I agree.
Because I got a call, if you read this letter, it's actually sound recommendation to the fire chief. You know, he's got, he's got, now, I asked you this question. I asked you, I says, you took them all off for training, he took them all off for training, he put them all in there, all the fu- regular firemen, and all the, some of the column men, correct?
Correct.
And when I went down to the fire station to check, there was a nineteen-year-old fire chief's son there.
There's a nineteen, there's a nineteen-year-old Linfield firefighter there.
A Linfield firefighter?
Correct.
I'm sorry?
Yep.
From Linfield? Was he an EMT?
I don't know, I don't know his qualifications. I don't know his qualifications.
So, we only had one firefighter?
You had two. You had Linfield and a Nahant. Correct.
The question, that question I have is, the recommendations from the union was, the timing of the year was, is, is strange, to bring all those firefighters out.
But the question I have is, if this letter was never submitted, then why are we having this conversation?
It was submitted.
No, it wasn't.
Yeah, I, you know, you, 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 I, I'm telling ya, there's something amiss here.
I agree.
Because if they're saying to me that they never withdrew it, then who's responsible for this? And when I tell ya, I found one individual at the fire department, that means the town was not covered. And, and, let me read the letter here, so the towns knows, no. Chief, Nahant firefighter associate is grateful to receive the instructor letter rescue swimmer training that leads to certification. We would, however, like to be on the record with the following concerns.
I must say that I have concern with this-
You have concerns. You have concern.
I have concern.
Well, wait a minute, I, well, who do I believe? I believe that the, the union's here, and, and the in- and the individual that wrote this-
So, are you telling me you don't believe the fire chief?
I'm telling you, there's something amiss.
I agree.
There's something amiss.
I agree.
And the individual who has served the town in a very admirable way, he's wrote over two million dollars worth of grants to get new fire trucks. He's the one that signed this.
I would say service-
What bothers me, what bothers me, let me, let me finish, and stop interrupting me, and try to defend yourself. I'm saying to you, and what is, the points here are saying, you know, we had this training, and their recommendation was to split it in two groups, so they can cover it. These guys were, were trained all day, and then they had to work the shift. They were exhausted. And thank goodness, we never had any alarms, or medical aid calls during those five days. We had them at night, but, but, I'm, I'm, let me, can you explain this to me?
I can explain it, because-
You can't explain it to me?
No, I can't.
How come he's not here tonight?
Because that letter was never submitted.
You know, you never said that he's not coming. You told me he was gonna come here.
I told you he was.
No, you didn't. You, 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 you're, you're like slippery, I'm telling ya, you like to slip through the cracks. Well, this is not gonna fly. I got this copy, you know something, I know something, the next meeting, I'm gonna bring the fire department up here, and I wanna find out who's telling me the truth. I'm gonna find out what happened here. This is this, this is an example of what's going on. The fire department was not covered, and there were people from Linfield, they had no, they would not know whether how Pleasant Street is. And they had no idea, all of our firefighters, these suggestions that they put in there were sound suggestion, he didn't wanna lis- listen to it. The fire chief didn't, so he made a poor decision, and I'll tell ya, he should've split those people up for training. He should've split them up, and the column men, too. To have everyone training, and then I asked you today, I asked you today, we've been on him to get the, the co-weather training, so they go out and co-weather and buy the equipment, okay? You're gonna like this one. I asked him, how come the fire chief did not write a report, a recap of the training, the cost, who passed, who didn't pass? And what, what, tell me about the whole thing, the report. You said to me, quote unquote, am I right? Make sure I wanna correct you.
Let me hear the quote first.
This is a quote, you said, "He don't have to do that, nor should I. You have to ask for that report." Am I right? You said, "I have to ask for the report."
What I said is, where's the requirement for the report?
No, 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 answer the question. Did you say, "I have to ask for that report"?
There has to be a request for the report.
No, there has to, no, that's wrong.
Okay.
Jeff, that's, that's, that's simply wrong.
Now, that, you know, that, you know something, what bothers me, that's poor management. That's a poor management skillset. Someone do, ask for, get all this trained in, and no one writes a report, it's all done, here it is, ba-ba-ba-ba-bum. I asked him to be here tonight, you blew me off, and I knew, and I was gonna bet him a thousand bucks that that fire chief would not be here. Firefighters are here.
I told you, so you-
No, you don't, no, 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 no. You, you didn't know what this was all about. And I asked Enzo not to say nothing, he, he said something to you. No, that's not why. You're, you're debating me, okay? I'll tell you what, we're gonna have our meeting, I'm gonna have all the parties present, okay? We'll have the fire chief here with all the, the department, and I'll make sure there's two people. If this town was unprotected, that was a very poor choice, a poor decision. And I'm telling ya, they wrote that in this memo, they worried about that. And they just, why couldn't you listen to them? But no, all of a sudden, I get these two emails, everybody's covering CYA on this one. And I'll be honest with you, the town was unprotected, as far as I'm concerned.
And I'm uncomfortable with this conversation.
You're uncomfortable with it?
I am uncomfortable.
I'm, I'm, no, no, I'm, you know why?
As the human resource director of this town, I'm uncomfortable with this-
You're, sure you are, cause you're involved in it. And Enzo won't, he won't allow, he won't allow.
I'm uncomfortable with this conversation.
He doesn't want executive session, so I, I have no problem with the public. And I'm not gonna hide this from the firemen.
Here's the thing, Jeff.
The thing is, we shouldn't even be having this conversation.
Here's the problem I have with-
Of course you don't want the conversation, because you know, there's, there's something awry here, and I, and I don't believe it, the firemen!
Here's the problem I have with this, Jeff. A couple of the firemen got in trouble a while back for speaking to the selectmen. I'm not gonna mention their names. And they were written up. So, and they were told that they had to go through the certain sequence of events. And that was department head first, department head, town administrator, and the selectmen.
It's a grievance process.
Okay, well, that's the way they want it done, am I right?
That's the way the contract specifies.
So, this letter was written, and it was supposed to be CC to the Board of Selectmen, and to you. He should've, he should've turned this in-
Then, then the fire, then the firemen didn't proceed with the CCing. Because it's their responsibility-
Because if they did, they would, they felt as though they were gonna get in trouble.
Then don't write the letter.
Jeff, you're painting a no-win situation for them. He's painting a no-win situation for them, you can't have that. You can't have it both ways. All right? We need to see this stuff.
Chief, what, what'd you say, Justin? The chief? Right. Come up here, come up here, I want you, I want, come here, get on the mic, I wanna hear.
I must say again, I'm uncomfortable with this conversation.
Course you'd be uncomfortable, I'd be uncomfortable, too, if you were sitting in your chair.
This is just, it's, it's him telling us how the sequence of events went, that's all.
I'm not participating in this.
Well, I don't want you to participate, I want you to give me answers. I asked you for that fire chief to be here tonight, and he was not here.
I'll talk to-
I asked you, I asked you several times. And then Enzo finally came out and told you about the letter. And then you knew, and I warned him, did I tell you, the fire chief won't be here? And you, you think this is gonna, like, everything else is gonna be pushed under the rug, and we're gonna forget about it. I'm not gonna forget about it, I'm gonna have it on the agenda till he shows up and answers that question.
I'll be talking with labor council about this.
You gonna talk to labor council?
Have to talk to labor council.
Get your whole team together. Get your whole team together. Cause I'm gonna have labor council here, too, all right? And I'm gonna have their council here representing. And I'm gonna have the fire department up here, if they have to drive the goddamn engines up here. This is, this is absolute disgrace.
Did you, Josh?
Go ahead, Justin, go ahead, Justin, go ahead.
Well, uh, Austin wrote out the concerns as union president, uh, we presented it to Chief Feinberg, and, um, Austin asked him to pass it up, the chain of command, as we were asked to do prior.
By Chief Feinberg, he asked him to make copies?
Uh, he asked Chief Feinberg to pass it on to, uh, Mr. Chelgren and the Board of Selectmen. Um, he gave, uh, Chief Feinberg a, a hard copy, Chief Feinberg asked him for an electronic copy, so he could email it to you guys, eas- pass it on easier. Uh, Austin provided that to the chief, and I, I don't know, I was asking-
Well, we, this is the first we've ever seen of it. This is the first we saw of it.
Never saw it, right?
We, I, I never saw it until I asked Justin, and he, he, he dropped it by my, my house. And I, I'll tell ya, I was quite upset. house, and I, I'll tell you, I was quite upset. I'm still upset about it.
If I may throw in my two and a half cents, I never received a copy. I was never informed about this. That's why I'm sitting back.
The, 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 the other thing, you gotta understand, being a fireman, I was a qualified fireman, and I gotta tell you, I was an EMT. Being a fireman is all about trust. That's the major thing, because when you go into a fire, you need to trust the guy that's next to you. And if they can't trust what's going on down there, that, that's a major issue, in my eyes. Firemen, it's, it really is all about trust, am I right? I mean, that's just how it is, and, and you can't, we just can't have that. It's gotta be, if he asked, if Austin asked, and, Austin's a pretty laid-back kid, guy, to have this CC'd us, you and us, then he should have done it.
So, the problem I have with this conversation is, you are now making or waging assumption that there's an error made, and it was on the chief's side, and that I take offense to.
I'm not making an assumption on anything, I'm just saying it was never, it was, I never saw it. I never saw the letter.
So...
And, and what he's saying, what Austin's saying is, and what Josh just said was that, um, you know...
It was asked to get passed along before the training started, so everyone up here, the people that make the decisions in this town, were aware of the coverage that was provided during that week of training.
All right.
This letter, this letter's dated July 4th, and this is what, August 15th?
I think we need to shut, we need to shut this one down, and just, and, and, and talk about this later, when Richie wants to have the chief here, so, we need to speak about it.
We will speak about it.
So, let's shut it down.
You know, you know, Dan, you're probably correct, okay? And I probably would have moved for executive session, but I asked, and I was told that the Chief Feinberg would be here tonight. And I asked...
And who told you that?
You did.
I didn't.
I asked the firemen, Austin, I mean, um, it was, yeah, Firefighter Antrim, he was the head of the union, and he said he'd be here tonight too. But I think he's working?
He's work, working.
Huh?
All right, so let's, let's, let's just, uh, we'll, we'll, we're gonna put this off until the next...
No, I don't wanna put it off. I wanna put it right on the next agenda. I want it right on the beginning.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, I, I, I understand, but I think we need to just chill a little bit tonight, and, uh...
Well, you know, here, T, you got a copy of it, T?
Nope.
Here, give him my copy, here. Okay, here's my copy, T. I don't have a copying machine at the house, okay? You read that, then you talk to the firemen, walk down to the Fire Department and talk to them, and they'll give you the answers.
Okay, now, the next thing on the agenda is the golf course, and we've already discussed that, the committee's gonna meet on Monday, I think.
Correct.
And I think what's gonna happen there is, they, um, they're waiting, I think, Anthony and, um, John, to give them a report of what they wanna do for upgrades, or whatever it is.
Capital planning.
Capital planning, yeah, capital improvements, all right. So, we'll wait to hear a report from the golf committee?
Yes.
Okay, next is Woffinger and Habermaster appointments. We had, I have one question, and I just wanna clarify this. We just put on two, two, two police officers?
We did.
Okay. My question is, and the DPW, correct me if I'm wrong, hold on, you can speak a minute. The, I don't wanna get caught up if the police go out on a call, Habermaster call, that they get, is it in their contract, is it contractual that they get paid overtime for that?
The understanding is that they will do this on their own time.
Okay. So, but if they're on duty, in other words, when, I worked for the DPW, for instance, I was a qualified fireman, so if I went out, I get overtime, which, you know, as a call guy. So, I think it's, I don't wanna incur any more expenses to the town. I mean, they have to understand...
Agreed. And part of the benefit of having the police in this service is that...
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, it's just that they, they're there, so when they're there, they can serve the multiple purposes.
I don't wanna incur any more expenses.
Nope.
I don't want them coming to us in a, you know, uh, next year, when their contracts come up saying that they wanna stipend for it, or they wanna get paid extra for it, because then it's just gonna increase the budget.
I agree, I agree. And that was understood at the appointment.
Uh, did you wanna say something, anything, Rob? Okay. Right, oh, okay. All right, I know my, yeah. All right, okay. Um, okay. I'm, I'm fine with that. You guys okay with it?
No, I'm not, okay. I, 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 I have no problem with the police officers, I think it's a great move. But we asked for two, the Board of Selectmen collectively asked for two appointments from, to the Haberba, uh, this is, we get turned down.
Just you asked for one.
Who was the other one?
I think it was just only the one, uh, one...
Give me one?
Well, that, that was...
That was one? Who was he? Jack Luba?
The recent one was just the, the one.
That was the Woffinger.
Peter Bobb.
Yeah, I, I don't feel comfortable calling, using names, but, um...
Right.
I just think it's inappropriate.
Okay, um, Peter's declined right now. He's, he's, he'll, he'll, unless you wanna appoint him, I mean, it's up to you, but he doesn't wanna make any waves, I don't...
Well, these two police officers replaced Ross and Andy.
Okay.
Who, who did a great job for us.
Right.
You know, I want, you know, Robbie to have what he wants, and, I'm not, it just, it just, I don't, you know, the Board of Selectmen, uh, not getting, uh...
No, well, he's down there every day, so...
We, we couldn't, we couldn't, we can't even appoint a dog catcher. Everyone, you know, they're doing what they want up here.
T, you okay with that? Okay, all right. We'll just let that one show. Okay, now, the Housing Authority review, all right, I put that on there. I'm getting a lot of complaints, okay? I want you to get the wiring inspector down there on Greystone Road, and find out what the wires are, that someone's gonna get clotheslined and get hung on. They've been there for months, it looks terrible. They need to get down there. She needs to do something about that, and she needs to open up those apartments that are eligible. That place is a disgrace.
Do we wanna meet with the Housing Authority and just have a more direct conversation?
No, I just, listen, we're supposed to be all part of this now, right, Richie?
We, no, no.
We've made part of it, so...
The lawyers advise us, we're responsible for that Housing Authority.
So, now, what we're gonna do...
And if we're responsible, we should call them in, because those properties are a disgrace. These people are leaving barrels, rubbish, dogs, they all have boats, it's unbelievable. Every area I look at where the Housing Authority's involved, it's a disgrace. We should call them in the next meeting, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
And have a power. I'll be, if, we're, we're responsible.
But I think...
We were told we're responsible by all the lawyers, am I right, Dan? Huh? No, the Housing Authority, yeah, but they told us, well, we are ultimately responsible.
Right. So, we need to, it's, it's town pro, it's, it's, it's in the town, I don't like it. Lots of people don't like it. I think it's a wiring issue, they get wiring hanging from the building. I, I'm not, I'm not happy with that. And they have to understand that.
So, I can call them into the next meeting?
Call them in the next meeting, but in the meantime, why don't you get the wiring inspector over there, and let me tell you something, someone, I don't know what they are, they could be cable TV, but they're going through the windows, they're going through, someone drilled holes through the side of the buildings, uh, the wires hanging down where people can, you know, if you're tall enough, you're gonna get choked to death. So, I think you need to just, he needs to be over there, and the building inspector needs to go over there.
We need to call in. They just got a million five grand from the state, and they need to spend that million five and, and clean up these properties. This is an absolute disgrace.
All right, it was never like that. Never, ever, ever like that in this town. I can tell you right now, I grew up here, I'm sixty-two, Richie's a tad older than me, and Seals and T, I'm the youngest one on the board, and I can tell you right now, they would never like that, ever. Am I right?
You're right, you're correct.
All right, okay. Uh, police towing and parking, again, Mr. O'Gall, okay? This is becoming a problem. We have asked to get this done. We've asked to get the cars towed and tagged, tagged and towed, all right? It was always done before, uh, it's getting overrun. If you go up East Point, am I right? They're everywhere. They, if you go to Wingersheek Beach in Ipswich, I think it's in Ipswich, um, it's thirty bucks to park there on a weekend night, on a weekend day for the day. So, if they come up here and get a, a parking ticket for thirty bucks, what's the difference? So, there needs to be other consequences. They need to get up there and tag them and tow them everywhere. I don't care how it's done, but we, I can tell you, for me, I want it done. Richie, I don't know how you guys feel?
Yeah. They actually park anywhere and they don't mind the, the, the ticket. I think if we start towing, it would be much better.
And I tell you, I, I, I was, I was away, I, I, this past weekend, but up until this weekend, I thought they were doing a pretty good job. As I, I swing around, and I make, I just drive around, the Woff areas seem to be very, I, I don't see any illegal parking down there. Forty Steps was cleaned out pretty good, and the, and the parking lot. The only place they had problems, uh, was Wilson Road, but they cleaned that up. They've got a police officer and a cruiser over there and a motorcycle, you know, tagging, uh, tagging over there. But last weekend, I guess there was a major problem, I, I don't know, you...
Spring Road's becoming a problem too, and they have to stop them, when they're parking on the sidewalks, people can't walk down the sidewalk. They have to go to Walton Street. The women with baby carriages, they, they can't park on sidewalks, they have to be, the cops have to, even if they have a hot stick, they're not supposed to park on the sidewalk. It's illegal, it, uh, it's danger, it's not, I don't know if it's illegal or not, but it's dangerous. Someone's gonna get hurt, someone's gonna get hit by a car, uh, because, again, they're, they come flying around in Castle Road, or wherever they, they park, and Spring Road is a perfect example. Just park on the street, on one side.
I have to agree with Richie that the police have been doing a great job this summer, and, um, I'm not sure if there was a problem at this last weekend, but they've been doing an excellent job. Bob has come in and spoken to this issue numerous times, and I'll ask him if there's other alternatives that we can research to get this done additionally.
Well, see, we've set policy, and we're telling you, we want them tagged and towed. It doesn't matter what he wants, we're telling you that's what we want, and that, and we, we're directing him to do that, and he has to understand that, as you do. That's what we want, am I right? We want it done. Simple as that. Um, okay, closing announcements. Uh, the town hall will be closed on Monday, September fourth, two thousand seventeen, an, an observation of Labor Day.
Don't forget to mention, oh, one nine oh eight.
Oh, yeah, okay. Um, August twenty-sixth, they're gonna have Havana's Nights. People should buy their tickets, they can buy them, ohone908.org, uh, they can, there's a couple of other places they can purchase them. Uh, it sounds like a fun night, I'm actually going, uh, so, should be a good time. And they do a great job, ohone908, and it's all built for the NEF, the Hot Education Foundation, so, we thank them for all their hard work. Okay, anything else, gentlemen?
These two people out there, do they have anything out there?
Margaret and Nick, they're here for the, uh, open space and...
Oh, okay.
And the Green Committee.
Oh, okay.
Enzo, we have a executive session as well.
Sorry?
We have an executive session.
Yes, uh, right now, we're gonna adjourn the public meeting.
And not come in, not, not come in...
And we're gonna go into executive session and not to return to open session. Can I have that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Okay, all who's in favor, sing over, say, aye? Aye. Aye. We are adjourned.